Well, I don't want to drink it.
I had seven cups today, I'm good.
Seven, that's it, wow. Alright, are we ready to start?
I think so.
Alright, so called order, let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we got everybody here, including Sarah, who's joining us on the phone this evening, so that's good. And, so the regular agenda, we got a couple of mods on here. For E will not be talked about this evening, and for I, which, that's supposed to be twenty twenty-one dash two, and on J, it's twenty twenty-one dash three. We are also adding Arrowhead Third ID Agreement between eleven and twelve, so we'll call that one eleven eight. First one on I, it's the dash two, and on J, it's dash three.
H and I.
H, okay. I'm sorry, H and I, my fault. Thanks for the correction there, Jim, missed that, okay. Think that's all I know about, anybody got anything else?
Nope.
You should be. Alright, so I'll look for a motion to accept with the changes.
So.
Alright. Chelsea, that there, Jeff did his second. Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 I guess I got ahead of myself, didn't I, that was the, that was the regular agenda, we'll go to the consent agenda, and that's where we're talking about the E and H and I, I apologize for that. But, still holds true, so. With those changes, you got anything else, Sarah, you got any questions on the consent agenda? I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second? Naomi does a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, alright. Council meeting minutes from August sixteenth, because I didn't see anything on there that's changed, unless you guys saw something?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the last minutes.
Okay, Naomi makes a motion, can I get a second? Chelsea does a second.
Can you speak a little louder?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries. Alright, on to the special meeting minutes from August twenty-third, any thing different there that you guys saw, or was I think it looked good?
Motion to approve the special minutes.
One second.
Chelsea and Naomi did a second. Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, alright, public comment, anybody got anything they want to chat about tonight? Going once, going twice, alright, we'll move on. And the sheriff's report, did he send one, Brenton, I guess I didn't look.
No, they didn't, it was a holiday there, so.
We will wait with that, then they'll get with us next time around. Alright, we'll move on to number nine, and John, who wants to pick?
So it'll be, we do have Derek Flanagan from Id Bailey, he's going to present the audit, and findings there for you, so if you have any questions on it, he'll run through with PowerPoint to... Run through, yeah, run through for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Or no, it's the twenty twenty audit, sorry.
Yep. Alright, thank you. I'm gonna run through an executive summary, we call it, so it's a PowerPoint that is presented. It was dispersed, I believe, at finalization, I don't know if you guys have it in front of you, if not, we are, I did make sure that we could project it here and present it for you as well. And reason for this executive summary is, those financial statements are quite large and cumbersome to try to go through for presentation purposes, and so we've created this executive summary to try to help you with the analysis of the audit. We feel it gives you a little more pertinent information and condenses it in more meaningful fashion. If you have any questions at any point, please don't hesitate to let me know, I'd be more than happy to either answer them during the presentation or at the end of the presentation, whatever, whatever works best for you.
Yeah, I don't think we got this one, we got the original one, so if that's.
They had their, you guys had the.
Is it?
Actual report.
The actual.
Yeah, we got the actual report, so that's fine.
Yeah.
Go ahead, we'll follow on.
Okay. So, you have hired us to come in and perform a financial statement audit, and as part of that audit, the financial statements are your financial statements, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on those financial statements. The, the opinion you received for the current year is a clean audit opinion, an unmodified opinion is the term from accounting standards. That is the opinion you want, and I can see the excitement in the room that you got this.
Hey, I'm excited, I don't know about the rest of the joint, but I'm excited.
What that means in, in layman's terms is that your financial statements were prepared in accordance with standards, do not contain material misstatements, and are fairly presented. And so, that's the opinion you want, and that's the opinion you received in the current year. As we perform our audit, we are required to report certain findings that we become aware of as part of the audit, so next slide, please. And, as part of the audit, we had three findings in the current year, the first two were classified as material weaknesses, and that is that you had a lack of segregation of duties, and that we prepared the financial statements. Anytime that Id Bailey prepares those financial statements, it's required to be reported as a finding. The lack of segregation of duties is just an administrative function of the small office staff that you have. You would have to hire, you know, three more people to adequately segregate the functions within the accounting department, and that's just not something, from a cost perspective, that you want to do just because you get an audit finding. And so what you have to do then, is you have to have competent, what we would call compensating controls in place, which is, you know, your guys' review at, at a council level is very important to, to ask questions and to bring things up if something doesn't look right, that, that's a level of review, not, not to take for granted, and, and those sorts of things. So you can have what we would call compensating controls, even though you don't have enough staff in place, but we are required to report that as a finding when, when you don't have adequate, I shouldn't say adequate, enough staff to, to separate the functions within the accounting department. In the current year, you did have a significant deficiency for journal entries that we proposed, so as part of the audit, if we proposed journal entries, that's required to be a finding, but I will say that that, the classification of that finding improved from the prior year. Last year, that was considered a material weakness. This year, it's considered a significant deficiency, which is in improved condition. That classification is not as strong as the material weakness, so improvement was made in the current year, as well as the fact that there was a fourth finding in the current year that was alleviated in the, in the prior year, that was alleviated in the current year. So, improved conditions from the findings perspective. So now I'm just gonna go through fairly quickly, I know you guys have a lot going on here, so I'll try not to take up too much of your time, but yet at the same time, try to give you some meaningful information. Some financial information that comes directly from your financial statements, the first one is your cash and investment position, and this is, the city as a whole has your business type activities, and then governmental activities there, so you can see the difference. And really, this can, this can fluctuate depending on the timing of your receipts and dispersments, so just depending on, you know, your year-end is as of December thirty-first of each of the years presented, so what we're presenting here is on that date, December thirty-first. So depending on, on timing of receipts and dispersments and those sorts of things, this can fluctuate. Some analysis on your general fund, so as you get into your fiscal year, you always create a budget, right? And that kind of helps guide your, your actions for the year within the general fund, so this just displays your budget to actual comparison, so there's a lot of information here, but it just tells you where you are at in comparison to your budget for your actual results, and the variance is the far right column for the two. There are two items that were really large variances, but what I would say is that they, they actually even out, and it's the, on the revenue side, you had charges for services that were transferred out, so those two net each other, you can see the big variance in transfers out and charges for services, and then the capital lease proceeds, anytime you enter into a capital lease, there's an entry that has to be made both to revenue and expenditures within the general fund. And so, it increased both your expenditures, which is the capital outlay line item in the expenditures, and your capital lease proceeds line item. Those were really the biggest differences, but in all actuality, they netted out and they had zero impact overall to your fund balance. So you can see, this goes through your, your dollars for the entire year, and at the bottom, it gives you what your fund balance is within the general fund as of year-end. And we'll do some analysis on that on a subsequent slide. So why we, next slide, please, why we analyze your fund balance, it's important to have a positive fund balance, really three things that come to mind, it helps with your bonding, it can produce income to the extent that it's invested, and then it just offers that cushion for when unexpected things do arise, you have cash on hand to, to help with those unexpected events. And so, this just goes through the, the fund balance categories, I'm not gonna spend any time on this, because you actually don't have very many fund balance categories. The next slide is your, your total fund balances as of year-end, for five years presented. The next slide is your, your actual fund balance, this is something we found through our research, and I'm gonna get into this on, on the subsequent slide, but we're gonna analyze your fund balance within the general fund as a percent of expenditures. So what we do is we take your fund balance as the numerator, and your expenditures as the denominator, to come up with a percentage. And, one of the, the benchmarks that we found through our research is from the GFOA, that organization listed there, which recommends governments maintain no less than five to fifteen percent. So the next slide is where you are at, you are at forty-six percent, so you're not in any danger of being in that five to fifteen percent range. However, I would say that is just a very, very high level benchmark, every government is unique, and so you have to determine what's best for you. You know, for some governments, that may be, you want to be at that fifty to seventy-five percent range, others may want to be just in that fifteen percent range. It really depends on where you're at from a cash position as well, and just how frequently your revenues are coming in, because if your revenues are only coming in twice a year, you may want this to be a little higher, because you have to wait, you might have to wait a longer period of time for those dollars to come in. But if they're coming in frequently throughout the year, then maybe you can get by with a little bit lower of a percentage, so. Something to keep in mind, but you can see how consistent it has been over the last three years, and the decline from sixteen to eighteen really is just the growth that you had in expenditures, so as that growth occurred, that it drove this percentage down. So that was all on your general fund, I'm gonna do some quick analysis on some of your proprietary funds, so the first one is the water fund. And we only have three years of information, because prior to that, you were on a cash basis before we took over the audit, and so we really just wanted to keep it for, for the full accrual that we've performed for an audit, so each year, we'll keep adding on a year of analysis for you, but unfortunately for now, we only have three years of information. You can see we have operating revenues in blue, the expenses in green, and then the difference between the two is gonna be your income and or loss in red there. One of the things that is a theme for these first two funds is that, as you've grown and your infrastructure has grown in these funds, that creates depreciation expense, because we depreciate your assets that are in those funds, and that has increased your expenses line item on here. Now that's a non-cash thing, that's an accounting function, but it's not cash going out the door, it's just that we're depreciating your fixed assets, so. Important to, to clarify that distinction between, between cash and non-cash. So this is the water fund, the next slide is the sewer fund, again, the same format, three years of information, and at the bottom there, you see where that operating income and or loss is at. And I should say, we, I don't know why we don't have the, the numbers on there as labels, but for the water, it was a deficit of fifty-four thousand rounded, and this is a deficit of two thousand for sewer, in twenty twenty. The next slide is the garbage fund, and you can see same format as the previous two slides here, and you can see that the increase it's had over the three years in terms of going from operating at a loss to now operating at income. So again, hitting it very high level, but just trying to provide you with that information. Just two more slides left, so bear with me, still analysis on the proprietary funds. All of that was your operations that I just previously went through, which captures a year's worth of activity from January first to December thirty-first for your revenues and expenses. This net position, again, is as of your year-end, December thirty-first, but captures where that net position is for all three funds here on one slide for the three proprietary funds that you have. The biggest increase has been in the growth in fixed assets, as you've grown, there's been capital contributions made to these funds in terms of infrastructure assets, and that has increased your assets and correspondingly your net position as well. And the last slide is just your cash and investments for the proprietary funds, so you can see where that is. And some of that can depend on timing, again, whenever you're looking as of year-end at your cash and investment position, it can depend on timing of, of receipts and dispersments, but nonetheless, providing you with that information. And that actually is the last slide, so at that point, at this point, I'd open it up to see if you guys have any questions or discussion items, or any answers for me?
Let me back up to the water slide again, Sally, can you back up to that? Beginning of that again. Okay, so, when you're looking at that right now.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, I don't have my glasses, so, I'm just gonna go with it, but I mean, when we're going down below that degree line there, that's showing that we're running a deficit on.
Yep.
At December thirty-one, twenty twenty, okay.
Yep, and for this, it captures that year's worth of activity, so this is what happened from January first to December thirty-first for each of the three years that are presented. And to give you some context, I mentioned that depreciation, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, there was an increase in depreciation expense of thirty-nine thousand, and the deficit was fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand rounded. So you can see that that made up the majority of that, of the, you know, decrease from, from the prior year. Now, there was some increases in other expenditure line items, but none of them were as large as that depreciation.
Yeah, so if we go to the next slide, this is the sewer fund. Yeah, so that's pointing.
That one improved, yep, from nineteen to twenty, yep.
And that's what I would expect as well to happen, so, okay. Yeah, I just want, more for clarification, so everybody understands what went on there with the water.
Sure.
The sewer, so, okay. Guys have other questions on this one?
I don't think so, it's very well put together, so, a lot of good information.
Yeah, I actually got through the, the draft a couple of times. One of the things that, I mean, to me right now, knowing where we were four years ago, where we are right now, that's been phenomenal change. I mean, when you get that phone call that you got the worst audit in the state of North Dakota, that'll get your attention pretty quick.
Sure.
When they cut off your access to funding, that's even, that's another wake-up call. So to go from that to having, you know, basically, three years now, we've had good audits, even Moody's took notice of that.
Sure.
You know, where we've come from, so, as a city, so I think that's phenomenal, and I thank you guys for helping us get to that point so that we can have these conversations with our bonding officials and show them that we're getting our books in order.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'd say, I, I agree completely, and want to thank you guys for all the help, and hopefully we can kind of keep this momentum going, because you guys, I know you have a lot going on, and there's tremendous growth in this community, so it's just a matter of keeping up with that growth and, and, you know, keep the ball rolling the right way as it has been the last three years.
Right, and I want to acknowledge Becky for helping us get to this point, because without her help, this would have been a monumental task, and she did phenomenal. So did our staff in Brenton and other people that got involved in getting us here, so that's, that's a testament to the quality that we have for staff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I agree, I agree.
Just for, just for the, you know, the residents to be able to.
Did you open your voice?
Sorry, just so that the residents are able to kind of trust to, you know, a big trust with the, with the city to, knowing that we're doing the right things, so.
Yep. Yep, I agree.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a good night?
Yep.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Okay, so we need to do some action here, Brenton, just basically approve.
Yep.
Okay.
You need to.
We'll see anybody's.
Prove the audit findings or approve it.
Yeah, unless you guys have any other questions, I think, we'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion approved, aye, that's presented.
Okay.
I never knew this, and I'll make a motion to approve, I do agree that this is huge improvement over previous years, and a lot of information to digest.
Sounds good, Sarah, I'll put you down for making the motion. Jeff, there you go. Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 There you go. Motion carries, alright, good. Alright, Brent, you got ten.
Okay, the last council meeting, nuisance abatement for seventy-eight twenty while doors away, is a vacant lot, owned by a developer, a builder. They had some scaffolding, or some, and some materials there, some pallets, and then some high grass. Within a few, within a day or two after our council meeting, it was addressed, so I wanted to report back to council saying that that has been mitigated or addressed since it was tabled at our last meeting.
Nice.
Yep, there's no action that needs to be taken from council on that, so.
Alright, so let's move on to eleven. Brenton, you got that one, or Lucas? Brenton's guy.
I'll take it here. Just making a quick note.
Yep.
Okay, the next one here is a request from Mr. Jim Do in regards to, his property is in country acres, about halfway down Seventy-Second Street on the west side of the road. And there's a road that connects from the south end of Maple Lake subdivision going to Seventy-Second. Main concerns are tied to, that road was placed within easement, so, without being an attorney, is within the legal area where we can have a road there, that was platted, the easement was glued on the plat. The road was, there were sixty feet on Mr. Do's property, sixty feet on the property to his south. The road was, for the most part, entirely on the north side, so Mr. Do's, but within that easement area. What Mr. Do has requested, Sally, if you go to the first, or the other one there, what he was requesting is compensation for thirty feet of the property used for the road construction at twelve thousand dollars. Councilmember Todeau and I, and Jim Doman, we met with Mr. Do, Mr. Do is in the audience, if you have any questions, or give him a touch base with you two. We met with him for quite a while here, well over a month ago, and I believe we had some very good discussion about his concerns on it. That twelve thousand dollars came from, through our discussions, in working with Jim of looking at how much right-of-way has gone for in similar areas, like the roundabout, where you have some farmland, some households there, how much a county paid for right-of-way, we use that factor into this to get to that twelve thousand, if I remember correctly. So I keep looking at Jim, since he's the stronger math one. Like I said, this is for thirty feet of roadway, at twelve thousand dollars, so he's asking for, the council, you do have a couple different options here. One is do nothing, because there is an easement on the property there, so you can have the road there. Another option is, you can purchase that right-of-way from Mr. Do, thirty feet, at the twelve thousand dollars he was asking for. And also, we could plant evergreens, he mentioned six evergreens on south property to obstruct the view of the road from his house. So those are things that could be done there. And then, the last option would be, there's the, no compensation or combination of, but Mr. Do could dedicate the land to the city as right-of-way. What that does is, it takes that, makes it into right-of-way, it reduces his lot size, which means that he'd be, you know, less land to be taxed at. So, you know, he's taxed based on the property value and the land, so that would go off of there, so he wouldn't be, uh, or taxed as much for property that he's not using, that's being used for a road. So there's a couple different options for the council to consider. He also mentioned, or has, had another request in regards to, let's see, a compost pile that was mistaken with, by the contractor, as Do. And he was asking for two hundred dollars for that. It was.
Was it in the right-of-way, or what, or why did they move it?
Jim, you would know more on this one.
It's in the road easement, why it was all put on the north side is to match up with the.
But the.
What's that?
The compost.
Oh.
Compost pile.
I am sorry.
The contractor mixed it up with regular.
They mistook it for, mistook it for topsoil.
Yeah.
His pile, it was towards the back of the lot, they were spreading black dirt on the backside of the lot, and mistook it for, for, um, topsoil.
Okay.
Can you go back to what you were saying, though, please?
As far as.
The location.
The sixty feet, so on both sides of the corridor line is a sixty-foot road easement, half on the Do property and half on the one to the south of that. It was skewed a little bit to skip off of the Do property, but the majority of the right-of-way beyond to the west of that was dedicated as part, dedicated right-of-way as part of the Maple Lake Estates addition, so that lines up with that section and what's in the Do's property.
So, the worst patchard itself of Maple, have we ever tried to buy right-of-way from them, or getting them from them to make the road in the middle of those two adjacent properties?
The city doesn't, doesn't deal with that, that's the developer plating and dedicating the right-of-way. So the developer owned the land and dedicated it on his property.
So then how, can I just ask how, why it wasn't split between the two?
Because the road is all on the north side of the corridor section line, on the Maple Lake Estates. So it's a straight line from Seventy-Second west, there's not a jog.
Did Mr. Do ever ask for you to put it halfway in between?
After it was already done, yes.
Yeah.
Or in construction, yes. And we did, like I said, it was shifted to the south a little bit, maybe not as exaggerated as what was desired, but in order to get the curves in there to fit the geometry, it just wasn't gonna be as sharp and as centered as it would like it, as he would have liked.
I would like to make a slight correction there.
Jim, why don't you come on up to the microphone, please?
My wife and I met with Jim, and we, I gave you an alternative where it could go down the middle and then just angle off at the end, and you said that it was not done, it could be moved at that time, as you told us.
They said we would look into it to see if the geometry of the curves would work within the area provided, and we shifted the road, ten feet, I believe it was, to ten feet to the south, on the east end, so at the intersection of Seventy-Second and Hundred and Fourth. Ten feet south, or ten feet sticks in my head, so it comes from your corner more towards the south. So we did talk about putting curves in there, it's just a matter of fitting them into the area that we had allowed.
But we talked about it, and you said the road wasn't finished, because it wasn't finished, and you said that it could be moved, and that's the point I'm trying to make. And I said, the reason we proposed that in the first place was to protect our trees, right now, the road is so close to our trees that they're gonna grow over the road before very long. And it's difficult to mow around them and stuff. This would have moved the road back to the middle, we would have planted the trees like they told us to plant them, where they told us to plant them at the beginning, and then, I took, at the end, you could use the last, you know, fifty, sixty feet to do the curve and line up with theirs. And you said that it wasn't done at that time, that it could be done.
I don't remember saying that it could be done, but I do, it was not done when we talked to other, but it was, the majority of it was done. The fill was placed, they're using it as a haul road, by using it as a haul road, they were compacting the fill in place, so.
Jim? Well, I guess, I mean, just from my standpoint, I mean, I don't really see any downs, I don't see bad things here, I mean, we're, if we've done this before, we want to be fair about this.
The difference, though, with this, is the city already has the right-of-way, it needs to be an easement, so all you're doing is getting a different property interest.
Can you guys pull up a map for me, so that I can just see what, and then also, is it, can you help me see, was there another entrance to the, that development?
This is the second way in and out.
Okay, so, that was added on after the fact?
No, this was in the original plans.
It was?
Yep, on the subdivision, you just have to have one way, two ways in.
Two ways in.
Multiple ways in, yeah.
Okay, so, if I could zoom in a little bit more, I guess.
Bring up the plan. So a typical city street right-of-way is seventy feet, dedicated right-of-way, this is sixty feet, and the road easement was sixty feet on the south side of it. So, to utilize the sixty feet isn't unnecessarily. So to utilize the sixty feet isn't unnecessarily odd, being that we only have seventy for most city streets anyways.
So when you say that seventy feet for most city streets, is that between two different properties, thirty five and thirty five, or is it seventy on just one and?
The way that has been done in the past is thirty five and the additional on the other side of the, of the um, of the property line. As you can recall, when we were dealing with Lakeview First Edition, that was a big discussion item. And the recommendation from staff at that time was to not do that anymore, because you don't know when that south side or that south side, the other side is going to be developed, or when it's going to be platted. Which basically leaves you with half of a right of way, should all be on one side, or?
So right now we only have an easement, correct? And what is, what is technically, what is the difference between an easement and a right of way?
So the, with an easement, the property owner still owns the underlying property. But they can't interfere with whatever the easement is for, so in this instance, the easement is for a street. So the underlying property owner cannot interfere with that, but the city has the, the grantee in this instance can install a road on that property. So right now, the way it's set up is the best case for the city, because the city can install a road. The underlying property owner still owns property, so they're subject to paying taxes and uh specials on that property. And that's why Brent said one of the options would be for them just to dedicate that to the city, then the city would own the property as its right of way. Uh, and the city would be subject to taxes and specials on it, or specials because the city hasn't paid.
Paid specials, we would have to pay.
Paid taxes, but they paid specials on it.
So the amount of footage that Mr. Do is giving up here is close to an acre, is that what the property is total, what, five acres? I have no clue what the numbers are.
He's asking for. If you go, Sally, if you scroll up to the other one.
So, so I guess my point is, you know, if the city was buying a parcel outright, then you'd have that higher value. But here, the city has the property interest that it needs to construct a road, so to pay on top, that doesn't make sense to me, but.
It's just under a half acre.
Over acre.
Just, yeah.
Thoughts, comments, guys?
So I guess my thought would be, um, like I have no issue with the property being deeded to the city. The compost, I feel like that should be paid for by the developer if they did that. And as far as um the compensation for the road, I just get leery because we were setting a precedence moving forward.
And that's what I'm just saying, if we've done it before, I can see that, so I was just trying to gauge whether, you know, we've actually done this before, under these circumstances.
And then the six trees, I mean, I know that this property owner obviously has gone through a lot of changes with this development. I, I have no issue with the six trees, I like trees, so um I think, you know, we might have to plant another six trees when the next person asks for a tree, but.
I don't have a problem with the trees either.
So, that's, I guess, that's my thought on it, but I wasn't in these conversations, so.
So I, I, I guess I look at it from the standpoint of, okay, um, if the road would have been down the center of both properties, where one resident isn't getting impacted so much more than the other, the other hasn't lost any property at all. You, you, from a landowner's standpoint, or the homeowner's standpoint, I understand where he's coming from as far as losing any significant amount of his property. Um, because right now, obviously, he's still getting tax for it. And I, I know we're not going to continue that road out all the way to seventeen, because we physically can't without having to do an eminent domain and removing a building. I uh, I realize you're starting a precedent, what I asked earlier today, um, how many other properties would be in similar circumstances? Or are there any even this large uh of losing that much land? This is probably the biggest one in the city of ours, as it stands right now. And I, I realize where you live would be considered probably one of these, or very close one of your neighbors. Once again, how much land are they really, you know, looking at probably getting compensated for it? I, I don't know if it would actually compare to this.
You're talking about where lots overlap the street?
Correct, where lots overlap the street and there's not a dedicated right of way.
So you're saying we're paying more in taxes?
So.
We have the next meeting.
He owned part of that street.
No, I.
Um, because right now, obviously, you don't, you don't have right of way. All you have is what, in the beginning, what seemed like was a, I'm not going to say a temporary road, but a road that came in. Uh, in my conversation, it was put in as convenience for the developer, and it was like, well, okay, um, it's, obviously now it's a permanent one, because we need two entrances, uh, one in, one out, I guess.
It was put in for convenience of the developer?
No. It was put into, because it was a requirement via ordinances to have more.
Lucas, go ahead.
So something else that we all need to consider with this easement is this didn't just show up. So either the property owner was compensated for this easement before, or the property owner was put on notice when they purchased this property, because it's a permanent easement. So it's, it's something that would have showed up, uh, or shown up in a title opinion that was done when they bought the property. So it's not like it's a complete surprise that there was a chance that a road was going in there. Uh, and so the buyer needs to be aware, uh, when purchasing real estate that.
So when, when this was plotted, obviously, this is plotted by Stanley Township, just because I, I believe we bought our properties almost similar times. And, you know, the sixty foot easement um is quite large compared to what the normal easement would be for a street, street.
No.
No? Didn't he just say thirty five or seventy, uh, thirty five with thirty five?
Depends on the classification of a road.
And we've ran into other street issues in this area before, or easement issues in this area before where they were on the plat. And so I, I mean, it's something that's been in existence for some time. And I know it's unfortunate, but just something to consider, I guess.
One thing to consider too is up by the, by Cub Creek Edition, uh, when that was originally platted for the school, there was thirty five feet of right of way with the additional being on the opposite side. That's eighty five feet, because that was determined to be a collector road.
Okay.
An arterial, so there's eighty five feet of dedication, a thirty five feet of dedication, so.
Russ, you have a question?
No, when this was, when we did the plan on this, we looked at that easement and said that there would have to be a road there. Because, because we saw there was, there was an easement there already.
Right. So that has existed for quite a while.
It was platted in two thousand and one?
So.
Oh wait, I take that back. That was when they're, that was when they're, two thousand and twenty third day, two thousand and one.
Okay, yeah. Sarah, do you have any uh comments on this?
Not at this time, I'm having a little bit of difficulty hearing all the commentary, so I'm trying to follow along as best I can.
Okay, I understand. Alright, any thoughts on this one? I guess I'm implying, you know, the deed, um, the property should be reassessed, I mean, I can see that. Wouldn't you think, I mean, if we're going to take that out as a road? You know, who's talking on here? Because I mean.
If the property was deeded to the city, or dedicated to the city or deeded, um, or purchased, then we'd be working with Cass County.
Yeah.
And refiguring out like the specials tied to it and uh.
If the, if the road goes in, it's best for the property owner, if the land is dedicated or deeded to the city, then the city is going to be responsible for any specials that are levied on that property. City has to pay taxes, so the city won't have to worry about that, but the property owner would not have to, to pay that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I really don't have any problem with the trees either, I mean, that's, I can understand that one. I think too, the developer should pay for the compost pile, they're the ones that mucked that up, so they should fix it. Any questions, comments?
Well, I'm just, I'm really struggling with this. Like, how many people would want to just give up their land and just be like, here you go, city?
The easement's there is, is the point, and so, I mean, you have to consider that as property owner, that if you have an easement on your property, you have to buy by whatever that easement is for, and you can't interfere with that easement.
Right.
Go ahead, Russ.
I just want to point out that we have a couple other easements in town that are going to be huge for this city. Those are, those are easements that we are going to be putting major roads on. That right now, people are mowing and growing things on, but those easements are there. And when we put the road on, if uh you think that if you're going to pay for this easement, they're going to want to come in and pay, and have payment for the quarter mile easement several.
That's what I mean, I don't want to start a precedence if we haven't done that before.
Because these easements are on the map. They're out, they're out, they're on the plats.
Yeah, no, I understand. Jimmy, you got the comment?
I have a couple of comments. Uh, first of all, I am not disputing easement at all. When we bought the property, we knew the easement was there, and we knew that there was going to be a road probably going through there. And we talked to the city people, and they told us where to plant the trees, and they said that they're sixty. So if you plant it sixty feet back from that, that'll give you thirty feet between the road and trees. I'm not asking for any compensation for that thirty feet, I only want the twenty extra feet that they moved it over. So now our trees are within ten feet of the road, that's all I'm asking for is that twenty. And you talk about setting a precedent? I don't have a problem, or you're going to set a precedent one way or another. How many places have they taken a hundred percent of the easement from one side of it, but not the other? That's a precedent, they're willing to take that away from one person and not the other, and I think that's unfair. And I think I should be compensated for that. I'm not asking for the thirty percent feet where you put the road on, and then the extra twenty feet is where I'm asking for the compensation. So if they would have put it in the middle, I wouldn't have asked for anything.
Lucas, comment on that?
It's the easement that was planted, unfortunately, it is what it is, and you can look at other areas in the city and find similar circumstances where that's where the easement was placed.
It's tough to come in like after the situation, that, I think that is the hard part. Like if we were, if we could have known that this was going to cost money to go on one side, we would have made the developer either go to the middle or, or pay for that.
Well, they said Stanley Township.
It was Stanley Township that plotted.
Not Maple Lakes Estates.
But yeah, like I'm saying, Maple Lakes, like, we're coming in hindsight, you know, our taxpayers are going to pay this, you know, so it's just, we have to, it's not the city's money. It's the taxpayers' money that is going to go to cover this, so we just need to be cognizant of that and.
But I mean, Russ is right, if we start here, we will, we're going to have some bigger ones coming, big.
Big ones.
I know, that's the thing we're talking about.
So there are two up on Sunny Side Drive right now. There's that one that does have a road on it, and then go up further north. Right there is another one that's platted that right now is just green space, and I believe there's a third one.
I thought there was.
Right up.
I thought, I think there's an easement here.
So, there are other areas where this has happened, just to get access into the, in the future.
Well, look at Ninth Street, uh, the walls.
I know, that's, that's where my concern is. That would be a biggie.
And that's platted road right of way, where Russ is referring to, but then you go south, we don't have anything. You know, after Sixty Fourth, we do not have anything, platted or easement wise at this time.
Through development.
Yeah, through development, when they choose to plat that land, when that land is platted through development activity, that's a new push for the road.
But that, that connection to Ninth Street is the one I'm talking about, that's going to be huge for the city.
Yeah.
Because we have the easement.
Well, we actually have road right of way there, so, yeah.
I mean, I definitely understand the owner's frustration and like the fairness side of it as far as this road ended up all on his side. When I think the, you know, purchasing the property was, he was under the assumption it would be half and half, so.
But it would have shown up on the plat.
It's, it's tough to come in and do this after.
Yeah. So I guess I'm not really in favor of the compensation part, guys, but I must, you know. The rest of the stuff I can get behind. I mean, we can, we can do the trees, we can help with that, I got, that I don't have a problem with.
As for easement, the road could fall with, anywhere within the easement, so if you treat this, uh, you have two individual easements on the plat, sixty each way. Says there could be a road there, it doesn't specify where the road would be, where it's located, it just says within this area. We anticipate to have a road. So yeah, in this situation, it was all for the most part towards Mr. Do's property. However, like I said, that easement, it doesn't say specifically saying it's going to be all on this side, right down the middle, on the south side, doesn't specifically call that out. So I'm just making sure you know that is how I would look at.
So it would be fair to say that he didn't, he, he might not have expected that whole.
He might not have expected it, and I can't answer for Mr. Do. However, I can say is the easement, when you're looking at a situation like this, that plat, for example, it says road easement sixty feet and sixty feet. It's saying here, however you did, would be, a road could fall anywhere within that sixty feet either way of that line. It may be all on one side, it may be down the middle, it may be all on this other side. It's just saying the road is going to fall within these bounds.
It's kind of out of your control.
Yeah.
What happens in the easement.
Because we do have times where on like a road right of way, for example, just use as an example, where the road may be shifted to one side or the other, north side of the road instead of the south side, or the right of way, it's a south side. You may see where like a bike path or a sidewalk may be on one side of the road. So that happens frequently, where you'll see a road doesn't always line up right in the middle of the right of way. And I would see that similar to like the easement here, so. I'm just trying to give another perspective look at, probably make a more difficult decision here, but it's it's just saying that a road could fall within these bounds, sixty feet either way, it's not saying where the road would be placed.
Note that east of this spot, there's sixty feet and forty feet on the other side, so it's not inconsistent across the street.
On the same plat.
On the same plat, on the same street, it's sixty, 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 forty.
How many of them are a hundred and zero?
A hundred and zero, a hundred percent on one side?
Yeah.
Like I said, they would be, you're looking at, there's two easements binding each other, so you have a hundred twenty feet where the road could fall.
How many of the city of ours are a hundred percent on one side?
I, I wouldn't be able to answer that.
Yeah.
So.
The south end of Maple Lakes is.
It's all seventy feet on their property, yeah?
The south end of Maple Lakes is all on one side.
Yeah, it's the road right of way.
We made them do it.
Right. And that's just certain circumstances that's going to happen like that, and I mean, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I don't really like the situation we're in here either, but um we are here now. Like I said, I'm not, I am not in favor of the compensation, because it is an easement we're looking at here. I don't, I understand people don't like that, but that is where we're at. If we start going and compensating here, we are going to be looking at a lot of money down the road. And this is something that I'm not willing to get behind right now, because it was an easement, but unless you guys see something different here. The rest of the stuff I can get behind.
Well, I guess I can just make the motion unless you guys have any other comments. Well, I guess I can just make the motion unless you guys have any other comments or people on it.
Just go ahead and, if you have other comments on it, this...
So, motion to approve the, um, property be reassessed in regards to taxes and specials? Or would it be the deed, deed to the land?
That would only happen if it gets...
If you're the deed to the city.
So it'd be deed, deed the land to the city if the owner chooses to do so. Plant six evergreens and discuss with the, with the developer about compensation on the compost.
The developer should handle that one because they're the ones that made that mistake, so I agree.
How do we make the developer do that?
Lucas, put a strong arm a little bit, can't we? The developer being...
Yeah, and has the conversation been had with them on it?
We have discussed.
Yeah.
And I'm guessing they're okay with it?
Yeah, he has, I mean, he has resources of being able to provide, uh, either maneuver again or, um, doing that.
So maybe you should talk with Mr. Do about that, and you guys can decide whether it's a cash or a replace. Jim, would you be interested in a replacement, or you would want the cash for the compost?
It would be extremely difficult to replace.
I know, you said that. I just didn't know if you had any option, that you wanted to look at that, or just cash?
They, my, because they have replaced twenty-year-olds.
Right, and I know that's not easy. That's why I just wanted to check with you. If you really wanted it, we could look around a little bit, but... I just don't know either right off the top who would have that much longevity in a compost pile. So, okay. I got a motion on the table, and I'm looking for a second, somebody wants to do it.
I'll make a second, and the reason I'm doing it is because I agree with the commentary that the existing easement was there, so there's an expectation with that, but I do agree that there's a few other things that can be worked out, so I will second that.
Okay. So Chelsea does, made the motion, and Sarah does a second. Is there any more discussion on this, guys? Just put it to a vote. All right, I'm gonna put it to a vote. I'm gonna do a roll call on this one, just cause I'm going to. Sarah, what's your?
Yay.
Okay. Naomi?
Nay.
Okay. Chelsea?
Aye.
Jeff?
Nay.
I'll break it down. Yay. Okay? So, you guys make that happen, and we'll move on to eleven A. Lucas, you got that one?
So, believe it or not, we are back to discussing Arrowhead Third Edition development, the ID agreement. We need to figure out if the council's okay with the fence and the shrubbery going on the east side of the property along County Route seventeen. I know it's been discussed, but the developers, engineers have a proposal in front of you, along with, or that has a fence on it, or where the fence is located, and then proposed shrubbery to be located adjacent to that fence. So we can discuss that first, and then if the council is good with the proposal, then we can go over the terms of the improvement district agreement. Again, the developers, engineers here, so if you wanna discuss the proposal at all, that would be greatly appreciated by the council.
Hello?
I'm Brady Law, stepping in for Brian Fattigale, which I'm sure you've seen here before, but, uh, so we're, just because of grading constraints, and, and we didn't wanna break up, or we couldn't really push that further into the yard, kinda the, the best option for it is to put that fence two, three feet, can't remember exactly, but off the property line, in, into the private property, and then just a shrub of alternating, um, arrowwoods and dogwoods. Not, I can't really speak to those, but our landscaper selected those. Contrasting red, blue colors, we thought it looked good.
Cool.
Well, what do you think?
What do you think, Chelsea?
Is that what you're looking, come on, I want your feedback on this.
So there was a comment about the dogwoods having, there's dogwood, did you hear this? By Julie? She, well, she's mentioned it at our last meeting, so I just thought I'd bring it up.
Okay.
So, yeah. It's nice to see a plan, you know, something.
Did you put this packet together?
I didn't.
Did, did you guys? Brenton, did you do this?
Oh, we got that from you.
Must've been Brian.
Wow, that's impressive. Tell him thank you.
Jeff, any comments on this?
Um, I have a lot of dogwoods. Not a lot of dogwoods, but, um, I, I'm not the one living there.
What's wrong with dogwoods, guys?
They get... They get twig blight.
Okay. What about these?
And the eye of the beholder, right? I know, I know.
Yes. So, my question is, I have dwarf red maples that everybody loves, right? I think that the cost is the same for the soil conservation service. I'm not sure how large of bushes you're putting in here, but, um, if you're just starting with the really small ones, obviously the cost will be the same thing, I would assume, and so the conservation service will be behind large ones. I don't know, I don't know how she feels about the dwarf red maples or not, but...
The amber maples, the dwarf or not?
Yes.
So, those get to like twenty feet, cause I did look at those sticks, I know it was discussed last time.
Twenty feet?
That's what, and...
What's the height it can go to?
That's what Indiana C's extension service has.
So dwarf fish basically means so much, not like, scrunch.
That is the dwarf red.
That's for your amber.
Yeah, was there like trees on there?
Fifteen to twenty feet.
But if they're gonna get up to the power lines, then...
Well, I think that, I think some tree would be nice, you know, but...
I mean, I...
I don't wanna keep this going.
Right? I mean, that's what I...
Does everybody hate you about this?
No.
Chelsea, no.
We just gotta talk, talk it through a little bit, cause I think we're getting closer here to the...
To her comment, my dogwoods are, seriously, they are like noxious weeds. Um, I get to mow them pretty much anywhere in my yard, not in my tree strips, but anywhere they wanna decide to start growing at. I have them up by my house. I promise you, I have never planted anything close to my house like that. Um, they endish, uh, put out suckers and start growing long distances from wherever you planted them.
Oh, really?
Maybe in a, huh?
Really?
Yeah.
It's not a close tree, so they plant from the beginning of every show.
Jeff, I didn't hear the comment on what species that was that had the long suckers. Can you reiterate that for me?
It's the dogwood, dogwoods.
And also, I mean, whether it's cottonwoods or even poplars, but anyhow, um, I'm just wondering if you guys considered the, the maples? Cause like I said, I have a lot of people that comment down in my yard that, I have people taking pictures in front of my plants.
They take senior pictures in my yard, and those are still pretty, but I have the red.
Sharon, how tall?
I, I have the regular ones, my dad has...
Yeah, you got...
My, my dwarf are maybe fifteen feet tall, maybe at most.
That gets close, right?
That's too tall.
Is it?
From what Brian was saying, I think that ten foot was kinda ideal.
Is that the developer? Okay.
I'll put any tree in you guys want, okay? I, I get it.
But you see what we're trying to do here, right?
I see. Yeah, we want a short tree, we got the power lines, I get it. So, we can come back with some other recommendations, and go, here's some, three other choices. Not to the co, I don't think the whole council has decided a tree, but we can come back to a couple people and go, is this acceptable? We got one, we're one for two, the way it sounds in the trees.
What I'm thinking at this point, guys, I think we can go ahead with this thing, but let's work on that, on the last one now, okay?
I will.
Chelsea here will gladly come and talk to you about what you like there.
We will send choices to, to...
Julie and I can, Julie is the expert, so...
Right.
We can, we can house expertise.
Yeah, we could get this figured out in pretty short order now.
Overall, if we can, we, we can, Lucas and I could work through the ID.
I just need to know that you're okay with a fence and shrubbery. That's all the ID agreement is.
Bring on the shrubbery!
Yes.
Cause then we could, then council could take action on the ID agreement tonight.
Okay.
That will help us because we need to keep the ball moving on tent bonding tied to this project. That'll keep the ball moving there, and that'll give us, create just where I'll need to go.
I will redo my proposal language that I have just for this. The developer agrees to install an eight-foot maintenance free fence along the east border of the development. The developer will also plant shrubbery adjacent to the fence as depicted in the landscape exhibit attached as exhibit E.
Sarah, I know you couldn't hear that, but it was pretty much blah, 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 and, uh, fence and trees, okay?
All right.
It's the legal ease, okay. I'm, I'm...
So, so end of the day, it's gonna have this exhibit attached, so you can all...
You know what? I, I, I love the effort. I, I think the eight-foot fence is great. I think the shrubs are great. I think it's gonna look, you know, really just...
I agree.
A nice shelter from our street, and thank you.
We get that one little detail done, I think it's gonna look great. Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so, so, we're all on board here now, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, the ID agreement, as you...
Can I go through it? I, s- s-
I suppose.
Brenton, you have it?
I can...
So I'll, I'll just start, um...
It's what you emailed me today.
I'll just start with the, the improvement district agreement. Again, it's for Arrowhead Third Edition. The city received a petition for improvements on June third, twenty twenty-one. We went through this process, some of the bigger items that the city needs to know. Uh, Jim's estimate for the probable project cost is one million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for this development. Uh, that being said, the developer is required to provide a letter of credit to the city in the amount of eight hundred, eight thousand, five hundred dollars, which is seventy-five percent of the engineer's opinion of probable construction costs. Uh, so the city is still waiting on that. Land dedication, developer agrees to contribute fifty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-one cents as payment in lieu of land dedication to satisfy the land dedication requirements. Uh, and that's, uh, evidenced by a recommendation letter from the Horse Park District, which is attached as an exhibit to the agreement. Water service will be provided by the city. Waste water service will be provided by the city, and will be serviced by the City of Horace, legislation numbers five, three, and one, and then it'll go to the city's lagoon. Storm sewer all goes to lot seven, block one, in Arrowhead Third Edition. And then the landscaping, the city encourages landscaping, and then the developer will have to plant boulevard trees pursuant to the city's ordinances. And then also in that landscaping section, the developer agrees to install an eight-foot maintenance free fence along the east border of the development. The developer will also plant shrubbery adjacent to the fence as depicted in the landscape exhibit. And then the rest is boilerplate legal ease that we throw into our agreements. So the exhibits are the petition for improvements, which again, that was June third. Uh, that's for all the municipal improvements. Exhibit B is the boundary map of the improvement district, which is contained solely to Arrowhead Third Edition. So that's something that the city hasn't seen in some time. And then exhibit C is the probable project cost. Exhibit E is the land dedication letter from the park district. And then again, exhibit E will be the landscape exhibit. So that is the improvement district agreement for Arrowhead Third Edition, which, uh, we need council action on.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? We've gone over this before, so you just...
And I will update that exhibit, the landscape exhibit, once the shrubbery is provided to Councilmember Johnson.
I think I motioned then to approve the ID agreement for Arrowhead Third, contingent upon Lucas's changes for the, um, landscaping.
Second.
Okay, all right. Chelsea does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All right, and it passes. All right? There you go, yep. All right, Brenton, you got the number twelve.
Okay. Next one here is more of a discussion right now than an action. Uh, I know there are concerns expressed about boulevard trees, having a tree program. Uh, I've met with a home builder here recently to discuss their ideas of, um, if they add a thing outside the box, um, in regards to boulevard trees. Uh, their recommendation was in regards to have the city have a boulevard tree program that they, that we just file, charge a flat fee to be able to install the boulevard trees, will come in after the house is put in and plant the tree. Now, we can contract with the contractor, bid it out, get bulk pricing for those trees. Probably get fairly decent pricing because you're talking a couple hundred trees probably at one time a year, you know, towards the fall probably, or the spring. So you're not just buying a couple trees, so you're gonna get the best pricing probably possible, or one of the best ways possible for it. Um, but anyways, at the time of permitting, charge that flat fee to, as part of the building permit. Not an outside builder, okay, if this is a route the city would go, then, but as that they would, oh, make sure that the builders understand the logic behind it, because we do get complaints at times, it hasn't been too bad now about cost of building permits and things like that, of course. But this does give a guarantee that, yes, the boulevard tree would get planted. It gives the city the ability to have trees that will likely do the best here in the city or in our climate, uh, and help make sure that they get planted correctly. The obligations of the homeowners would be, obviously, once the tree gets put in, they gotta make sure to do the best they can to keep it up kept, you know, water it a little bit, and we, we'd have to do some education or some flyers or something, communication to those new residents saying, hey, here you go, we're planting this tree, and, identify the expectation of the, what their upkeep would need to be of the tree.
If they don't, do, do they just have to replace it themselves?
If they don't, you know, sometimes you get contractors that warranty those, you know, and they come back a year later and replace them. Uh, there is also, I've seen in, like, the parks, for example, you'll see trees where they have some water beds and stuff around them to help make sure they get watered and stuff like that. Um, from, and I'm nowhere near an expert with trees, but I have planted a handful of different ones, and the basic thing is getting them planted incorrectly and watering them right, you know, early on when you first get them in. The, those are the most critical things, at least from my understanding of it. Like I said, I'm not an expert with trees, but, uh, the basics there. So, it's a way for us to get a program going. If a tree doesn't survive, we come back, replace it. I'd work out the details, um, more defined than that, but I wanted to touch base with the council of, hey, here's the overall concept that we're leaning towards. Uh, see if council had any concerns about that. This would, this program would be something we shoot for implementing next year, so that way over the winter, we can help get the word out to the building community, the builders, and say, hey, effective in twenty twenty-two, this is what you're gonna have to do, this is new, here you go.
So does that, does that mean it turns into like an ordinance then, or?
We would work out the details. Uh, we'd have to come back to council with that rate, so we'd have to bid out to a contractor, you know, see, different contractors could do planting the trees. Uh, probably, we'd probably do a bid process to get the best price possible for the trees. And then we would have a rate set, and that rate being set, that we would charge within the building permits or at the building permit time, that would be set by council. So we would come to council under the resolution of fees, and say, council, we'd like to update the resolution of fees for the boulevard tree program, it would be X number, you know, X dollar amount. And I, I don't think it'd be a astronomical amount or anything, probably be about a hundred fifty to two hundred fifty dollars as a guess, but we'd see what we get for a bid price from contractors to do this, so, um, that would be likely something done over the winter. And then, like I said, when you come back with the resolution of fees, we come to council and say, say, council, we'd like to update this resolution, here's the fee that we're proposing.
Have we talked with any other surrounding cities that have this, and see how well it works, or what, what has not worked well for them?
This is a little different from other cities. One is where, um, I'll take West Fargo for example, cause we do get compared to West Fargo quite a bit. West Fargo, they require a deposit to be put down. Now, if Omar plants a tree themselves, and it meets the criteria, then they could get refunded that. That creates some friction with the building community though, because they, there's no guarantee the tree gets done, or there's a lot more monitoring to see, oh, hey, are they actually planting a tree? or there's a lot more monitoring to see, oh, hey, are they actually planting a tree? So, maybe we could ask around some more. I, I'm just talking the overall concept right now to council has any concerns about it.
Then you have to have somebody going around looking at it, that's the problem, so.
Yeah, we've had a lot of conversation about this and this is something that I've really been pushing hard, so I'm really excited to see it on the agenda. And, um, I do, I do think your plan sounds just like, I've heard a few options and I think that sounds like a fine option, uh, in my opinion.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, pass it on. I, I agree with Chelsea. I, I have to step in on this one because I too felt very, very strongly about the boulevard tree program. And, um, I realize there's several different programs in our local metro and surrounding areas. I've actually looked into that since our last conversation, just to do some comparisons. And I really believe this is a strong program because it guarantees that trees get planted. I, I know one of the other metro areas has a two-year period in which homeowners can plant their own trees and, well, not everybody knows how to plant a tree properly. And so, having it done by professionals, having a flat fee, guaranteeing that this work is complete, I, I'm very satisfied with this. And I, I'd like to thank those involved for putting some effort into it. I know we've been a dead horse talking about it and, and I hate to continue that, but thank you. Thank you for that.
Okay, go ahead.
In a past life, I was on the forestry commission at another city and, um, for seven years. And one of the things is that besides the proper planting, we can argue with the city or only, or the owner should or whatever, you have to water it. Is you don't have a watering program supporting it, that I hate to say it was funded through the forestry commission or however that's done, parks or however we share that job, a lot of those trees end up dying.
Right. So, that's gonna be the thing-
Like today, for this season we've had.
Yeah.
But they have those, the, that bag, uh, capacity, you know, where a guy can put water in those things and they just drip in, you know?
Those sometimes work, but when you get to real hard and dry, you have to run the water truck behind them.
Yeah, I know. I know it's not perfect, but I also know they have to be watered. That's, we know.
Yeah, and I think most, most people knowing they're paying for this will make an effort to take care of it. We, you know, we might lose some and that's where we need to decide if we wanna come back and replant them and, and do that. But, you know, there, once these houses go in without any trees, without any responsibility of trees, then, you know, that ship has kinda sailed for us, so.
Plus, we're gonna have some trees that don't make it. I mean, but just, if you plant a hundred trees, they're not all gonna make it, just because.
The other piece, the thing that we learned in ours is that we also did it for older people because everybody in the city was paying for that levy or that tax or whatever. So, if you had a tree that had been removed or died or whatever, you could request the tree and-
Yeah.
And I think that is kind of part two of all-
That's, that is, uh, part two of it. We're talking internally with staff of working out how we could do a secondary program, like what Steve mentioned there. Um, that would be geared towards existing residences. Um, one would be, you know, reach out to like elementary school and giving, say, one grade double, a tree. You know, a lot of times you get, I don't know if you ever gotten, I know when I was a kid, I get saplings. Well, we've never planted a sapling. Uh, do you give them something a little bigger, maybe a couple feet tall, pretty basic tree? Um, but it's more likely to get planted in the ground. Uh, the other one that we, we've been discussing, we haven't vetted out completely yet, could be, do we have a tree program to where we get X number of trees a year? And residents can apply to get one of those trees and then they can plant it in their yard. So, we're, and that would be funded through the forestry program. Our main focus right now is boulevard trees, because that was the majority of discussion. However, being able to use the forestry fund for some program like that, where we have some trees available for residents or maybe it's a reduced rate or something, that's something we are laying out internally still.
Russ, you had it.
Uh, in the zoning ordinance, we've had the requirement for the boulevard trees for several years now. We've just never done anything about it.
Right. So, now we're trying to get on with it. So, we're in a better position to get on with it right now than we were.
But what I'm saying is, the ordinance to back it up is already-
There, yep.
Yep.
Perfect.
We're in a position to do it now too, so.
Do you have lots that are fifty feet? Fifty feet, so if you want to be fifty feet, that would be too many trees too close together.
Well, I think that's where we would have to rely on a, on a professional to decide, like, smaller trees and-
Horticultures for Ground Forest, they're, they're planting every hundred.
Are those like big street trees? So, we could do like smaller-
Before, they were all ash trees and you would be, they're not going well.
So, that would maybe be, you know, depending on the neighborhood, we would have to accommodate for the tree, yeah.
Yeah.
But they felt that every yard sometimes it's a little too close.
And the city does have a boulevard tree ordinance that if I specific trees that, uh, are recommended for being planted in the boulevard, for being boulevard trees. And I believe it actually talks about spacing too.
It does talk about spacing.
If I remember correctly, it talks about spacing of ideal location of where it should be or it should be every so many feet.
We had to go out and measure ours just for that reason, you know, so it's in the right spot.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Definitely some, you know, some learning curve with it, I think, as to what's gonna work, but.
Yeah, but we're getting started with it and it's what we've been talking about.
Yeah.
So, you need a motion to get the show on the road or we got it?
No, our goal, we'll ask for, uh, action from council. Um, when we come back with the rate, so resolution of fees, updating that. I think that's the best time to be able to come forward to you, that our goal would be over the winter here. Uh, gives us time to be able to get information written up, tied to it, explain, here's what the program is. You know, we're able to solicit, get some bids, find out, okay, how much is this gonna be? How much, so we could have a rate that could be recommended that should be reasonable. So, we'll come back to council with it.
Alright, sounds good. We'll move on to thirteen. And Lucas, you got that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, this one is just a couple, uh, easements in Lost River fifth edition. Uh, the first one is, uh, sidewalk easement being dedicated, um, from Winning Development to the city's ordinance. Uh, and it goes over, uh, the north four feet of lots one, two, three, of block three of lots for fifth edition. And again, that's for the city to install a sidewalk. So, uh, the motion would be to approve, uh, this permanent easement and then we'll get it, uh, signed and recorded with the county.
Okay. We'll do them separately then. Has anybody got any questions on the sidewalk easement?
So, these are at, easements that are being added. And these lot owners-
It's Winning Development, so it's the developer.
They're already built on or no?
The developer owns them.
They're built on.
What'd you say?
The owners are fine.
They're built on, yeah. So, typically sidewalk is installed two feet off the property line, so it's two feet into the road right of way. These, there was storm sewer behind the curb, plus they had to get streetlights in. And streetlights have a large concrete base. And if you drill a hole in the storm sewer with a streetlight, it's kinda counterproductive. So, in order to keep enough separation between the drilled streetlights, storm sewer below, the sidewalk was pushed back a couple feet. In order to do that, we wanted to make sure that in the future, if we were ever need to do something with that, the reason we stayed two feet off the sidewalk is so that if you had to fix it, repair it, you'd be on city property the whole time. You had to shift it back to create separation. This way, we need to acknowledge that and get that easement, so we could come in back in the future if there was sidewalk repair project and replace it and not have to get an easement, not have to get anything at that time. This is cleaning it up on the front end and not the back end when there's problem.
And the, the owners of the property right now are Winning Development, L O, LP, Winning Development Two Incorporated and Heritage Homes. So, they're the ones that have to sign off on, on the easement.
So, it's not even residential homeowners yet? It's just?
It's those entities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, they have to sign off on it still and see it?
Correct. And the easement was actually prepared by, uh, Dwyer Law Office.
Gotcha.
I distributed it, so.
Motion to approve the sidewalk easement?
Yep.
Chelsea makes the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does the second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. We'll go to the landscape easement. I'm assuming we're in the same trajectory there too?
Uh, same song and dance, except for Heritage Homes, uh, owns this property. So, the, uh, they'll be the grantor granting the easement to the city. Uh, and this one is for part of lot one, block three, Lost River fifth edition. Uh, and it's the north thirty, thirty-four feet of the west one hundred and forty feet.
Okay.
And so, there's a, an exhibitor survey that will go with this as well, as the other one.
Any questions, guys? This is pretty much just going through the motions right now. Can I get a motion to accept the landscape?
Are we creating a flag law? No, it's just an easement.
Yeah. No, it's just an easement. Russ said. Okay.
Motion to approve the landscape easement.
Chelsea made a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries. On to fourteen. Jim, you got that one?
Yes. What we have before you is Water, Sewer, Storm and Street Improvement District two thousand nineteen dash six, change order number one. Um, as you recall, Cub Creek is located adjacent to County Drain twenty-seven. Um, there is a setback from the top of the banks, so those lots are, uh, have a larger yardage, as you would call it. They, is, there is a limit as to what can be done in that easement or that setback of the drain. So, what the developer wanted to do at the time of, uh, planning, planning, conceptualizing, was create an improved bank to the east, the west side of Drain twenty-seven. Right now, it's generally unimproved and it's just a bank weeds and then it goes off into fields or into people's backyards. So, he had talked with the Water Resource District about landscaping from the rear lot line all the way down to Drain twenty-seven. That didn't get conveyed in the construction plans. It was, the intent of it was to be as part of the project. It didn't get conveyed in the plans. There was a low spot as you came down off into the backyards, creating an undesirable spot as far as holding water drainage. Um, didn't fit his, his concept. So, um, they came back to the city and presented a change order to haul in fill, create that backyard with positive drainage to Drain twenty-seven, finishing it correctly the first time. There was some discussions had with the contractor or the developer about using the spoil from basements or using, having each individual homeowner do the work. And it was determined that, that we don't have as much control over those, those, um, that type of work. If it's just a private basement digger or if it's somebody else that doesn't have the control. So, you could potentially have one lot here, one lot here, one lot here, one lot here, where they should all be uniform into the drain. And this instance, this is working within the area of a legal drain, getting in and getting out at one time versus prolonging this over however long it takes for the, for the, um, adjacent properties to be built out. Uh, makes, makes more sense. So, um, we went back to the contractor. Contractor provided us with a price for an increase of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars to complete this work. We do have plans from the original, from the original design engineer and, um, quantities in the surface model on that. There is cau-, um, this, there is sufficient amount of money in the construction project that has already been bonded for to complete this work. So, this is paid for, this is included in the price or can be included in the price for the project.
We got enough to cover.
You got enough to cover, so.
And south, southeast water districts, okay with that?
Yeah, this was what was pitched to them in the beginning. It just wasn't conveyed. So, then, when the developer initially met with them, he wanted to, there isn't a plan by the southeast cast right now to improve that bank of the, of Drain twenty-seven. It would come in the future or the city would have to take it on. And right now, you don't have any standards for aesthetics along legal drains. So, this was a way for, to improve that section of Drain twenty-seven aesthetically and then-
Oh, keep it out of people's backyards.
Keep it out of people's backyards, so.
So, there's no, there is nothing from southeast cast, uh, water here, that drain that's gonna prevent us from altering that property? Is that, that's what I'm worried about is just, there's nothing that we're gonna get, I don't wanna say sued for, but approving that work is gonna be altering that drain?
You're not altering the drain, you're altering the land adjacent to the drain.
Mm-hmm.
So, the drain profile itself, the channel, all that isn't touched. You're picking up where the top of that drain is and you're working back to the property line. So, right now, it's kinda like a U. It'll be-
You're not in the drain.
They're not, not in the drain, no. Nope.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't see any problem with this. It's just, it needs to probably get done. I don't want people having water in their backyards. Nobody does, so.
Yeah, it's like it's cleaning up, so there's houses under construction, obviously, sites that will be-
So, this is the time to do it.
And then those are all, like, the property owners are gonna have to approve this or?
No, this would be done, so the land that is left to be done is developer-owned and he's the one who's, who's seeking it. So, um, in the many discussions with him and his representation, it was decided that, um, a more uniform product, all done at once, was better than having each individual homeowner responsible for piecemeal it together, plus dragging it out as far as surveying, as far as inspecting what's being done back there. We see it frequently where somebody builds a house and they had their version of filling in around it is different than the next person's. You know, it just might be a four-to-one slope away from it versus an eight-to-one, where it's a much smoother transition. So, this would make that whole area uniform. Use my hands a lot.
Definitely makes sense.
You know how much we love change orders, but I, I understand this.
Hey, it's a big one.
Yeah.
It is a big one.
It's a big one, so.
And this is in the contingency?
Yeah.
So?
I'm told this is in the project funds, so, that's what he said.
Yeah.
So, from that standpoint, there's no concerns?
No, and the, this, that amount has already been assessed to the properties.
Okay. Any other questions or there was, I'll look for a motion to accept.
Let's go move.
Chelsea makes a motion to accept. Can I get a second?
I'll make the second.
Okay. Sarah makes a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, so on to fifteen.
Alright. Water, Sewer, Storm and Street Improvement District number two thousand seventeen dash one. Lost River first, second, third, fourth, and sixth editions. Final pavement lift and we also have some miscellaneous street patching. Bids were opened for the, for the, that project on September second, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we see three bit, we received three bits, uh, we received bits from three contractors, sorry.
Easy for you to say.
Border States Paving Central Specialties and Northern Improvement Company, uh, bid tagulation is attached to the email. The apparent low bidder was Border States Paving in Fargo with a bid of two hundred, a total bid of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars. So, of that, two hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars is for Lost River and that's the final pavement lift. And then the second part is twenty-four thousand doll, twenty-four thousand and one dollar is for miscellaneous street patching. So, we've got street patching around the inlets in Chestnut, where the road is absolutely going, going, uh, going away, is a lack of a better word. So, this would be our, our patch until this winter or this coming fall, spring, when we do a more intensive street rehabilitation. There's a spot down here on Wall Avenue that needs to be repaired and there's a, um, I believe there's a third spot. I just can't remember where it is off the top of my head. So, but it's down on Wall Avenue. There's starting to be a, a, you're cracking and then up in Wall Avenue, a couple skim patches to get us through the winter up there. So, um, you'll notice the second bidder, so where Border States had bid two hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, the second bidder was three hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. So, that was a bit of a swing. So, I did reach out to Border States Paving to make sure that they're good with their numbers and they had indicated that they were. And I said that they didn't see anywhere where they had an error. They, uh, put pencil back to paper the, that night and then the next morning when I called them and they were fine proceeding with, with the numbers that we, that they presented us.
Cause that was a pretty big spread when we sat through the bidding, like, huh, okay.
And then the second one was, uh, Border States was twenty-four thousand and one dollar, or twenty-four thousand and one. Northern Improvement was twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. So, that one was a little closer, but, um, like I said, they, I called them, asked them if they had seen, noticed anything in their bid or if they wanted to proceed with it and they said they wouldn't have any problem proceeding with it, so.
Oh, cool. Alright, so you're gonna look for a motion to, uh-
Motion to award the bid to Border States Paving.
I can make that motion to award the bid to Border States Paving.
Now, we make some motion. Can I get a second? Jeff does a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sarah, you with us?
Yes, did you hear me?
Nope. Nope. There we go. Thank you. All right, on to sixteen.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, this was just an update, uh, as part of South Hill Farms' third addition. Uh, Lot thirty-one, Block five was supposed to be dedicated to the city via warranty deed pursuant to the improvement district agreement that hadn't been done yet. Uh, so we got that drafted and, uh, developer already has that executed, so we'll get that recorded. So just an update for the council that, uh, Lot thirty-one, Block five will be dedicated to the city, uh, for stormwater.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah.
All right, so you've got seventeen. We'll let you go with that one, though.
So I think Brett wants to start with this and I'll.
Well, I'd love for you to.
I'll incorporate my comments as needed.
We'll, 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 uh.
Remember, I got cake sitting at home, so let's move here.
We'll, we'll approach this together.
Ten seconds.
I'm kidding. All right.
This, this won't take, take ten seconds. I promise that it'll take longer than that. Um, what we're going through, we're looking at, um, the special assessment district for the connection sewer, basically a regional project along a hundredth going down to Maple Lakes, the very southwest corner that includes piping for sewer, uh, infrastructure, pipe, lift station, different things like that. There are some elements of that project that are regional and one thing that the special assessment commission brought up is, and this is more of a policy decision, not a decision that they can make, is they would love to see some sort of either a tap fee or something to where they're not assessing the properties for those regional improvements per se. So if you're on a septic system, for example, you're not being assessed for that at the time, but then when the time does connect, you have to pay a tap fee or connection. Now, a new development, for example, in a new development, you'll pay for regional, or the tap fee when you're taking your building permit. That's one of your expenses. And then also the properties will have costs for their local improvements. So the sewer, water, si- or, uh, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, water, road, those are local improvements that you see within a development. So the concept here would be that when a local improvement happens in these areas that are on septic, they could be assessed for that. But when there's a regional component for properties that currently are on septic, they wouldn't be paying a special assessment per se. They'd be just paying their tap fee when they're at a point they're ready to connect and they have the local improvement. That is not a decision the special assessment commission can make though, cause that's more of a policy and how the city would handle. In this one, in this situation, this would apply for that sewer line going along a hundredth and then down to Maple Lakes. In this scenario, the sewer fund or all the dollars that we would have put towards properties that are on septic, we go towards city property and our sewer fund would pay that amount off. Our sewer fund is capable of doing it. Years ago, we did not have, even a couple of years ago, we did not have the capability with our sewer fund to be able to do that. This is really the first year that I would say with comfort at all that we are in a position to be able to do some of these types of improvements. And what you're doing is you're investing into the sanitary sewer system for those regional improvements. So that way folks are just, whenever possible, they're only being there for the local improvements. That's what we're trying to bring forth, the idea to council of. Um, did I miss anything on that, Lucas? I'm just trying to talk the overall concept as a whole, cause this could be applied to other areas in the future by going this route. So it isn't just like this one project. If we have other projects that impact areas that are on septic, the portion that they would be impacted by would be put on city property and either pay for, through a special assessment payment from sewer fund or the sewer fund may be able to just pay for it straight up, depending on how many fun, how much funds we have in our fund at the time. So, yep. Any expansion on that or Jim?
Is everybody comfortable with what it's being proposed for currently?
Well, yeah, I understand the concept, what you got, what we're trying to do here, cause I mean, I can see the, using the tap, tap fees at the time of necessity, if you will, as opposed to, you know, just doing the blanket, uh, like what's been happening with the special assessment. I mean, that makes, it makes sense. As long as we've got a mechanism to do that. And again, our sewer fund is a lot more healthy than even a year and a half ago.
So keep in mind that this isn't for ag land. This is purely for existing residents with septic.
Yeah, I know.
So when we laid out the special assessments for, um, this, the force main and lift station down in the Maple Lakes area, the Country Acres area, we had proposed that that be assessed based on, on each one house, one, one, um, assessment, so to speak, one equivalent assessment. Ag land was different. We had to base that off of what the potential future use was and the density that's identified in the comp plan. So you, regardless of your size of lot in Country Acres, Riverbend, any of that, if you have a house with a septic tank, it's a one. You got ten acres, you got four acres, you got one acre. It's a one. And that one on the septic is what was looking at being placed over onto the comp lot.
And I know we talked about this quite a bit here now. Martin, you got anything you wanna add on this? You were in the, you were in the committee.
Yeah.
Come on up here and just, I want your two cents on this because I know it's been bantered.
Um, I'm on the committee, but I also live in the area, so.
Yep, I know.
It's a double whammy. So put me on the spot. Um, I have some mixed feelings. I think the intention is good and, but I have some questions, I guess. If we pay as a resident, if I pay my regional assessment, my special assessment and tap hook-up fees are seven hundred and fifty dollars today, is that all that'll be char- I mean, whatever it is at the time I hook up, of course, the hook-up fee can go up.
The hook-up fee could go up and the concept actually I walked through the council with would be, cause it, that special assessment commission idea is, okay, we defer, basically any costs would just be paid back later at the time of connection.
Okay.
Instead, this would be where everybody's paying the connection fee. So you would have that no matter what. So it, it, it would be the same if you built one end of town versus another end of town, your connection fee is the same, whatever the council sets by re- the rate, resolution, rate of resolution, resolution rates or fees. Uh, whatever they set for the connection fee of that year or that time, that's what the connection would be.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question, as long as we weren't getting a double whammy, because if you get the esp- the special assessment, um, put to your property and like me, I don't wanna carry, I'm to a point where I don't really wanna take a lo- on forced loan at four point one percent interest. Like I can, I can loan money, you know, probably cheaper than that, I'm guessing. So, I mean, if it was up to me, I'd just sooner pay it today instead of paying a bigger amount tomorrow. And my concern was that, but the way you describe it, that's not an issue. Um, I guess that was kinda the main part. I voted no on going ahead with the map as it was and just so everybody knows, partially because this wasn't set in stone yet. Partially, there's, I think there's still issues with the map, but that's my personal view. That's not the view of the committee. The committee outvoted me. So, um, I think that was the main thing.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
And, and this, like I said, this would address that you wouldn't have two separate connection fees. It would just be, here's our connection fee filed out just wherever you live in the city, if you're connecting onto the city sewer.
That's what it is.
Here's what it is.
And that takes the administration out of it too, cause we were talking about that.
There's very few chances for errors tied to administrative side. It simplifies it tremendously and it makes it to where those that are on septic are not really. It help, I, I, trying to make sure I phrase this right. It, uh, helps mitigate the feelings of being forced, like, oh, I have to connect to sewer.
Yep.
At this time. It's, it's that when you're ready, we're here for you.
Mm-hmm.
That's.
Yep.
That, that's what this tries to.
No, I like that.
I know you voted against it when you guys did the special assessment stuff.
Yeah.
After the banter, the conversation since then, I mean, is that?
I feel.
Make you feel a little bit better?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I feel a little better about it. I still think there's some adjustments that need to be made on the map, but that's not part of this.
Right.
I'm, I'm just talking to the, but I don't have any other concerns.
Yeah. Been talking about, I think that's probably a better one than, I think.
Absolutely.
We're currently at, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So I mean, I think we're in the right direction.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have to tweak it maybe? Yeah, very likely, but I think we're on the right path.
No, I really appreciate that. This, this is great.
This approach would not address ag land or fields.
Correct. I know, that's, gotta reiterate that.
So that's something to keep in mind and.
Establish septic system.
Yeah.
People. This is, that's what we're looking at.
The mentality behind that is because ag field could turn around, in theory, I'm not saying that it would, but in theory, it could turn around and you could have the application for development. Who knows when?
So you're, you're okay with this?
That's why.
This concept makes sense?
Yeah, from what I heard tonight at the meeting on Wednesday, I wasn't so sure because it didn't, it sounded a little hokey in how the mechanism was gonna work. I mean, I.
No, I mean, yeah, we did it, we vetted it a little bit more and we had a little more conversation and I think that's where we got to now.
And it sounds fair, like, like what you're saying, somebody in town or somebody in our neck of the woods, I don't consider myself in Horace proper, but, you know, wherever you are, the hook-up fee is gonna be the same. It's not that I choose to defer, I don't choose to defer. I pay my special today, but then I have to pay a deferment fee plus the tap fee. That's what I was concerned about, but this addresses that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon, you got, Sharon, you gotta, I gotta put you on the microphone. I've been nice, but I gotta let you get to the mic now.
I have a question that I live along the road to get to Riverbend and those septic systems are forty, forty-five years old where mine is ten years old.
Yeah, you're a little newer.
Right, so they're gonna have to go by my house to get to the houses that are much older. What will happen then if they need to tie in? Do I get charged for?
Hey, so it's just when you would tap, when you need to connect, you would have your tap fee?
So you just dig up my land and then?
There's gonna be a local project.
Yeah.
So there'll be a local.
Okay, so a little, yes. So if there's a local project, there would be assessment. Yeah.
Say that again, I didn't hear you.
There's gonna hap- so we're talking just regional right now.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a local project as well. So if that were to happen and they ran it next to your house, you can probably expect a local assessment.
So then I will get the ten units rather than the one?
But then you would have the ability to connect at that point. The local project, you would have the ability to connect versus the regional component, you wouldn't.
Yeah.
So that's, that, yeah.
So if I choose not to cur- connect, then I wouldn't have to pay?
Pardon?
If I choose not to connect, if we didn't need to?
Basically, she's saying if the pipe goes by there.
Yeah, if the pipe went by your house, what Lucas was referring to, that would be considered a local improvement because then you would have the ability to connect at any point when that project would be completed. So the local improvement could be assessed out still, but it's the regional improvement would be handled by the sewer fund.
And when you're saying local, you mean like a, a specific development that's basically positioning to get?
So like if Country Acres wanted to connect to the system, there has to be a local project.
Yes.
For them to do that.
I mean, the, the twenty-two acres across the road from me.
So like the, the infrastructure intended to serve a neighborhood per se, that's a local improvement. Regional would be going down like a hundredth or kind of seventeen.
Yeah, we're picking up multiple.
You don't have individual homes tapping into that line. You have, that's the main trunk line to move sewage to Fargo.
Mark, do you have anything?
No, I was just gonna say, I, I think it'd be helpful to know, like, what we talked with the special assessment meeting. Where, and Jim did a really nice job in putting, laying this out in my mind. I think where a sewer connection really has four components plus one. You have the treatment component, you have the regional component. So we have the treatment component with SSL department. So we're done with that phase. You won't find argument for me. And then you have the regional component, which is what they're talking about now.
And that's better.
And then what's been being discussed here is the local component, which would be connecting a bunch of houses that are like Country Acres to the sewer and then to connect to your house, there would be the service component that you have, that would be in addition to the tap fee or local fee.
So I'd have to pay for that?
Once you, yeah, I mean, that's just like any other utility because, you know, even natural gas or anything. But I mean, um, I mean, maybe that's not a good way to say it.
No, that's right.
But lo- but the local improvement is a part of that, well, uh, or the service component would go from the local line to your house. So that's, you know, if you hook up, is that.
But if I don't hook up, they have to run by my house anyway.
You, you'll pay part of it as the local, yeah. And then, um, but I, I don't know, I think something that's being discussed in the policy side that I'd like to see the development driver that you didn't, if you didn't request it or let's say this group developed, it's running past your place. You have a future benefit that the driver, the improvement pays a majority of, but that's something.
Well, but the other thing too is if a development has a majority of people that petition to improve too, I mean, that's, we gotta consider that as well. So that wouldn't be developer-driven. That is. Resident-driven.
Absolutely.
So that's, I mean, there's that.
But I thought you wanted all that because I really like telling people how the components.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. I know it sounds like a lot, but I think we're getting close. Like I said, it might have to be a couple of little tweaks here, but I think we're closer on something that is gonna be more beneficial to, especially the residents that are currently on septic that don't at this point need, be hooked, but.
So if this would be the approach that council like do, uh, this would be best by resolution or would be just overall for applied to this one project and we reflect it on the policy? We could do either way.
I, for this one, it's something that can just be applied to this.
Okay.
Project. I mean, I can certainly draft a resolution for it.
So we could apply it to this one?
Don't know which would be better. I mean, just apply it or do you wanna do a resolution?
I think you could do either way.
I'll draft a resolution and have it for your next meeting, cause that'll be fine, cause the special assessment commission doesn't meet till September twenty-eighth. So if I'm fine with this, this overall concept, I'll give it a resolution, then you guys can look at it.
That's what I was thinking. You get it in a resolution.
What the marriage is. And I already have the resolution drafted. I just need to change it.
Okay.
So are you comfortable with it, since it's not actually passed yet?
It'll be.
It would be before.
September twentieth is your next meeting. They don't meet till the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, it'll be before the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
As, as long as it's, you talk all here, not something, it'll be crazy.
It's gonna be all of it's going on here, now.
All right, so.
So what we'll do is we'll have Lucas strap, finish that resolution drafting, we'll bring it to the council at the next meeting. Uh, they'll explain more thoroughly what we're talking about. It'll be applied for that one project that applies right now. Uh, the sewer line down, along a hundredth and then down Maple Lakes. Then we'll bring this up with the special assessment policy.
Thank you.
Working group. We'll hash that out at the working group, cause that would be your overall policy of how it would be applied across the board.
Lucas, on this, on this one, on this resolution, and I know it's gonna sound a bit silly, but like an executive summary at the top of the thing that can condense down, cause I know there's gonna be a lot of, lot of paragraphs. If we can put it maybe just two paragraphs, what is involved with the resolution?
When you see my resolutions, the, the whereas clauses in them is what describes what.
Okay, so they.
If you read that, you'll be able to figure, okay, why are we doing this? Here's why.
Yeah, I'm just, what I'm trying to do here is make it easier so.
Yeah.
Everybody can understand this. We've been immersed in this a little bit longer and I just wanna make sure folks who are not aware of this, when they read it, they'll understand what we're trying to do here.
Absolutely.
Okay. So you don't need us to do any action last night. We'll just hang loose and then we'll meet next time.
To be able to get the resolution.
Yeah.
Together.
Okay, cool.
We'll bring it to you at next meeting. It'll go hopefully a lot quicker.
Well, we need to talk it through, cause this is something brand new to the town. It's, we're gonna have to get this across to folks, what we're trying to do here, so. All right, Lucas, you got eighteen?
Yes, so eighteen is the Saint Ben's Sewer Agreement. The city council has actually already approved this agreement. Uh, however, uh, it got somewhat more complex after discussing it further with, uh, Southeast Cast and then with Saint Ben's Sewer Association. And the reason it got more complex is Saint Ben's Sewer Association plans on dissolving at the end of the year. So because of that, we wanted to incorporate that reference, that individual property owners that are currently connected to the system are responsible, uh, for the terms and conditions that are outlined in this agreement. So what the revised agreement does is, is provides that individual landlords currently connected are responsible and then it has them all actually signing, uh, onto the agreement. So this will have to be signed by every property owner that's connected right now and then it'll get recorded, uh, with the county and that way we don't have any issues with.
Sure.
Anyone saying that they weren't responsible.
Right.
Under the terms. And it also says if someone buys a property, that's, that's listed in here already, they'll be subject to the terms and conditions that are outlined in here.
It goes on perpetuity with the.
But then any new connection has to be approved by the city.
Yeah.
Because we don't want, uh, the city wants to make sure that it can handle.
We can handle that smaller line.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Can you just do a, a quick recap on that?
Yeah, so in nineteen ninety-eight, the city of Horus and Southeast Cass entered into an agreement to create an improvement district to run a sewer line from Saint Ben's to the city of Horus. The reason that Southeast Cass was involved is because Horus cannot go outside of its, uh, corporate limits and create an improvement district. So Southeast Cass was involved. There was also an agreement between the city and the Saint Ben's Sewer Association saying that the city would handle their sewage, uh, under the terms of the nineteen ninety-eight agreement. Then when the, uh, bonds are all paid off for that improvement district, the property that was installed for this system, that was in the city's corporate limits, transferred to the city, so the city was the owner. Everything, uh, outside of it transferred to Southeast Cass. Southeast Cass doesn't, uh, want to be responsible, but they have to, because again, the city can't go outside it. So we had to create a new agreement because the other agreement basically expired. Yeah, and so this new agreement says that the city will handle, will continue to handle the sewage. Or, excuse me, Saint Ben's Association and the individual property owners will pay the city, uh, to handle their sewage. And then if needed, Southeast Cass will create an improvement district again, if there's major improvements and they don't, the fund, uh, doesn't, or isn't sufficient to cover the cost of the improvements. Because again, the city doesn't wanna get stuck with having to, to pay for a project.
Yeah.
So then Southeast Cass can create that district and then levy assessments.
Rush.
Who pays for the maintenance of the, their pumping system?
Their fund, so they're, so part of, part of this agreement is, uh, all those properties that are connected, they already pay into a fund. And then I think, Brent, if I'm not mistaken, right now, you just get one payment, right, from, from.
We all pay.
Sewer Association, so what'll happen in the future?
Once or twice a year, I think it's twice a year.
So what'll happen in the future is, is they'll pay the city, the individual property owners that are connected will pay the city as if for any other, uh, monthly sewer charge, and the city will put that in a separate fund. And part of that, that cost will include a maintenance cost in it.
So we are responsible for their maintenance?
Yes.
They'd be treated like a sewer customer.
The city's already treated.
Yeah, it's already.
It's been in place for over twenty years.
Oh, I know, I tried to get rid of it a long time ago.
Yeah.
Fuck, then we found out we couldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, there would be, they would see an increase in their costs, uh, being treated just like a sewer customer.
Should be commensurate with everyone, everyone in town.
Yeah, it would be the same as everybody else.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be higher maintenance.
Yeah, so.
And then the city maintains the, the right to increase that fee if needed.
Right.
Okay. Within that day, it was really to simplify, yeah, address, make sure we have assurances to the billing structure. That was one of the concerns.
Yeah, trust me, I was concerned with this agreement, but it's, it's a tough situation that everyone's in with the nineteen ninety-eight agreements and then Fargo's not willing to take on.
Too far, bridge too far for him, so.
Yeah.
Our line too far.
Anyway, so that's what it is, Mr. Mayor, and like I said, before, the city already approved this and Southeast Cass approved it, but then we had to Saint Ben's to sign it, and then they said that they were dissolved, so now, you know, it's revised to reflect that.
So you basically want us to approve it again with the.
Please.
All right.
Version seven, if you're wondering.
Pardon me?
Version seven.
Seven, there we go. Well, it could be worse.
Motion to approve the agreement.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion to approve, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Jeff does a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, Brent, you got the next one, nineteen.
Next one I have for you here is, uh, regards to community development director position. That position is currently vacant. Uh, what we have before council is a proposal from Baker Tilly uh, to do recruitment for this position. Within this proposal, the total dollar amount is nineteen thousand five hundred in comparison to other recruitments that we have done in the past. What, and we're going through recruitment right now, we're on the very tail end of it, regards to the finance director position. In regards to Baker Tilly, it sets them apart from some of the other firms we've worked with before, is they're willing to, um, back or warranty, uh, or guarantee, however you wanna phrase it, um, the candidate, that we, whoever is offered that position accepts that position. Within the first year, if they're terminated or accepted employment elsewhere, resigning, they would, Baker Tilly would come back and do that search for, for us. So that is a warranty component that I know is important for this state council with regards to the finance director position. Uh, another thing with them is this firm will reach out to potential candidates and say, hey, we have an opening here. Have conversations with folks, serve more like a headhunter type approach than just facilitate application process. So far, our experience, my experience working with them on the finance director search has been fairly positive. They've worked with us to develop the recruitment profile, uh, interact with the candidates, answer questions, they sent mailers out potential candidates for the position within the area. They also do that as more of a national search, and same thing for this position is what they would do. Uh, overall timeline, if council was to approve this tonight, uh, we would be going through, uh, getting the profile developed, advertising, and having them do candidate outreach between now and October twenty-first. Uh, screening applications, October twenty-first through November tenth, uh, background checks by November thirtieth. And then onsite interviews early December, and depending on candidates, if we decided to make an offer to one, then it'd be a, hopefully have an offer extended by mid, mid-December, so.
Be good to have somebody in here to start the new year, 'cause we're gonna have a lot of action going on again next year, so.
Yeah. Uh, this firm, they do work with quite a few different jurisdictions, different, uh, government entities, even private. Doing recruitment, replacement of individuals within this field. They are fairly credible. Um, and like I said, we've been working with them on finding a position, I've had good reactions with them, so. If you have any questions, they can answer them there. Also, they do assure us that if, once we would select a candidate, they wouldn't be trying to get that person to come. Obviously, within that first year, they wouldn't be trying to get that candidate to go elsewhere.
That's good, I appreciate that.
It is something you said.
They put it in their little bylaws there.
I just wanted to point that out to you.
Sheesh.
So.
All right.
If we do not find, and one thing also they said within their proposed agreement is that if we're unable to make a selection from initial group of semi-finalists or finalists, the work that, if additional candidates, so basically if they have to repost it or do anything else, the work with us obviously to get that done. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so you want an action, you want two, two separate deals here, huh?
Yeah, well, doing this two separate, uh.
Okay.
In regards to, obviously, where we pay for the recruitment there, it'd be from general fund.
All right, so, uh, on the first part here on the recruitment and proposals, you guys have any other questions on that, otherwise I'm gonna look for a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the recruitment proposal.
Okay. Naomi, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, don't Chelsea. Chelsea got, all right. So all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, on to the next one. The community development assistance, anything you wanna add on that?
Okay, for this one here, for in regards to community development, uh, assistance, uh, Russ, R and I, we met with two different firms, one New York City Engineering, another being Stan Tech, to see who would be, who we felt comfortable, capable, had the resources available to help the city in the meantime where we do not have this position, the community development director position filled. We met with both firms for probably, actually over an hour, around an hour or so, had a very good discussion with them. Wanted to stress availability, resources, and have somebody that can actually meet with applicants for different projects in person. Okay, and I'd be there on the front end and throughout, uh, but that day-to-day processing, the application, comparing to ordinances, everything like that, it does take quite a bit of time. We wanna make sure that they could dedicate folks for that. Uh, we have worked with Interstate in this capacity before, actually even before I started, the city was working with Interstate, serving as our planner. And when I first started, I know we were using that, uh, firm to do so. With the two firms that we spoke with, I believe Russ and I, I'm trying to speak for you a little bit there, but we felt most comfortable with Interstate. One, they had the resources right here in town, right, available, a couple of blocks away. Felt comfortable with the availability, and that they wouldn't get overwhelmed. We stressed to them that Jim would stay our engineer, he would stay on the planning side, 'cause he has a sensible engineering side. Also, the familiarity they bring with our ordinances, our community, in regards to plan your site perspective, preparing staff reports, meeting with applicants to go over their application, what they're wanting to do. Their planning director at Interstate, Brent Moore, he's based out, on Montana, but we have worked with him remotely before. And he's done a great job of preparing the staff reports, so by having him do the planner perspective and then having, uh, Mike Furt, he's in the back here, and Barry Johnson, working with us as more like project managers and handling the application side, will have that local presence, so when folks have questions that pop up, if I can answer, they can answer, and we keep the ball moving on these different projects that come to us. We have a lot of exciting things coming to Horus, um, in the near future, uh, which you'll, you'll see over the next couple of months, probably. But like I said, we're able to have the resources then, by working with Interstate, to be able to do this, so.
Brent was a good guy to work with, you know, when, when we needed him early on, like, that was a bit resource, you know.
If council is comfortable with us working with Interstate in this capacity, I believe that we'd be able to work with them through, uh, how we have our overall just structure of them being like a city engineer. Um, I have talked with Jim about coming back to council at a later date, later in this year, later in the year, to just go over, hey, let's update an agreement or get an agreement formalized in place between the city and Interstate for the different services that we have with them, so we can come back to you later with that, but making sure that we can work with them, that's what we're asking for from council tonight.
But we do need some help with the community development stuff, we know that.
Yes.
Russ, did you have any comments on that? I mean, you two talked, yeah, sorry. Just thought if you had anything else on that, because I agree, we need to.
We, we've worked with them before, and they're better positioned now.
Correct, that's, I'm, that's why I don't have any problem with this at all, from, you know, just keep us going here until we find somebody in the office, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with it too.
Okay, so I'm gonna look for a motion to accept, and we bring on Interstate then for a community development assistance program.
I'll make a motion to bring on Interstate.
Okay. Naomi makes a motion, can I get a second? All right.
You guys are free?
I don't know.
You guys do rock, paper, scissors, I swear.
Taking them all, so.
Okay, so, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Brent, you got a twenty.
Making notes again here.
You guys can do rock, paper, scissors.
Yeah, I don't really belong to meetings.
Okay. What I have here is we have the North Dakota League of Cities Annual Conference coming up, and at that conference, they have the annual business session. Uh, within that, uh, what we'd be asking for, what I'm asking council for, is to appoint two delegates to represent the city of Horus during the annual business meeting. Now, under delegates, um, just double checking here, in the past, what they have done is the delegates have been typically either elected officials or appointed, so of those attending the League of Cities Conference, Jeff, Naomi, Cory, and myself, the four of us, so basically identifying two delegates to go to that meeting, represent the city, and if they have any issue, they'll have some issues to vote on. Basically, is looking at where the league's priorities for the year. That's typically what they do, if they have any amendments to bylaws, they ask for voting up. So it's identifying two delegates. It's not the most exciting meeting, um, but, I mean, I know I'm not selling it the greatest, but.
How, how long is the, how long is that meeting?
I wanna say it's about half hour, forty-five minutes. Yeah, Cory and I did go to it before, and it was, yeah, about half hour, forty-five minutes.
Is there other sessions at the same time?
Typically, it's before they start.
Before they start.
Their sessions that morning.
Do they give coffee, free coffee?
They give.
Oh yeah, you gotta have coffee. I mean, it's just a.
Jeff, there's your coffee.
How early are we talking Saturday morning?
Saturday, no, September eighteen to eight-thirty in the morning. So it's.
So Jeff, you're volunteering, or should I just volunteer?
I'll volunteer then for one spot.
All right, I'll volunteer too.
All right, Jeff and Naomi. Sarah, you're off the hook.
She is a.
I know she is, I see she's paying attention. I'm just. Yeah, I'm just making, just making sure you're paying attention, that's all.
I am, I just sit here listening and I don't get closer, I pass enough on the right little circle.
There you go. Well, that'll learn you, right? Okay. So we gotta make a motion, all that.
So you have Jeff and Naomi?
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to approve the delegates? Is that right?
Yeah, go ahead. Chelsea makes.
I didn't hear Chelsea, say that again.
She's made a motion to accept that Jeff and Naomi are gonna be the two delegates for the, uh, annual business session at the League of Cities here next weekend.
I'll second that.
There you go.
Sure you will.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sarah.
So.
Thanks, you guys, for helping, uh, in my, in my anticipated absence, I really, really thank a lot of you for doing that while we're working under emergency conditions here, so I, I can't tell you how much it's appreciated, thank you.
Yep. All right, so all in favor, say aye.
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 There you go, all right.
You guys will have fun.
Not that big a deal, honestly.
Situations as well, I can't be there.
Brent, you got the next one.
Hey, the next one, uh, received a request from Jenna Yegi. Uh, council approved, recently approved a liquor license for, I hate to say, gr- grow, coffee.
Last time, yeah.
Yep. Uh, coffee and wine, uh, they originally submitted it under that name. And when the owner applied for the liquor, their liquor license through the state, the state said that no way they have to do it under their corporation name. Corporation name is J A T D, comma, Inc. So what they, they're asking for is to be considered, or to have that updated, to be reflected that, city would issue their liquor license that way. Uh, from staff perspective, we do not see any issues with that, and that's updating it so they can get their license through the state.
Stained.
This is just a procedural thing, just a, just a name correction, essentially.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and approve that.
Okay, re- really quick before you, just so you know who owns it, Jenna Yegi, who owns seventy percent of the corporation. Austin Joseph Yegi owns twenty percent, Trevor Leo Yegi owns five percent, and Dylan Mark Yegi owns five percent of it. So then she identifies their addresses in there, um, their roles mainly are shareholders. Jen is president and secretary treasurer is also a shareholder, Dylan is shareholder, Austin is a shareholder, vice president, Trevor is a shareholder.
Procedural.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to do the liquor license correction.
Okay, perfect. Naomi makes a motion, can I get a second?
A second.
There you go. Jeff does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, twenty-two. Brent, you got that one to start?
I used to in this big. Okay. I'm gonna pull up a map so you can see it, just so I can give you a visual. I'm gonna pull up a map so you can see it, just so I can give you a visual. Apologize here. So the area that we're talking about in regards to this is north of sixty-fourth avenue and west of the Cheyenne River. And what we're requesting is to be able to start conversations or move forward with conversations. And prepare a joint powers agreement or memorandum of understanding between the city of West Fargo and the city of Horace. Uh, this area, we do have, I believe, some mutual interests of various components. In regards to provide services to our residents, uh the first being. How do you handle sewer, storm sewer and sanitary sewer in the future? Not forcing anybody on to either of those, but just how do we handle it in the future? The other component would be our city boundary lines, just making sure, solidifying city boundaries. And then the last component is the fate of the connection of Ninth Avenue, or Ninth Street, I mean, correction, right here. Going down to sixty-fourth and then from sixty-fourth going just a short distance to the east to the A. The reason behind that for the road infrastructure is there's quite a bit of traffic up here in the wilds. That is a big concern of West Fargo, to be able to have another out of that development. And the traffic that would be going to the schools, high school, middle school, elementary school. So that is why it's important to West Fargo. So what this would be is we would be working through legal and through engineering staff administrators. Of a proposed agreement that can be brought forth to the Horace City Council and West Fargo City Commission. Of how we'd work together to provide those different services. There has been some interest in some development within Horace in this area. Like I said, in regards to sewer, for example, for Horace, where we would really focus on. I have to zoom out just a little bit more, in this agreement would be for sanitary sewer, you had the Greyhawk subdivision. And then you have the Ponderosa up here. The properties adjacent are just off of Congress Seventeen. We, we could handle servicing them in the future a lot easier. Up here, Ponderosa would be more difficult, it's not saying it's not possible, it's just more expensive. By working a joint powers agreement or MOU with West Fargo. The feasibility of being able to service them whenever they would need sewer, connecting up here along Fifty-second for Ponderosa is more viable. Storm sewer, there's a couple of different outlets here going into either wilds or Fifty-second. Then the Greyhawk subdivision can feed into the wilds, or anything north sixty-fourth can feed into the wilds. This is not forcing anybody to connect or do any of that at this time or with this agreement. What would be is saying, hey, we're there to help you when the time comes.
We're setting up the logistics so we know who's gonna take it in the pipe to get it to Fargo.
Now, there would be some, there would probably be some components within this agreement that'll talk about. Okay, if we need to do a, such as Ninth or Sixty-fourth, we'd probably have to think of. How would that improvement happen? Would there have to be a subset of district or not? But what we do is we vet that out and be able to have a conversation with the city council. Like I said, what this is, is it really lays out the framework of how we can handle this area in the future. And basically try to keep, keep in mind costs for residents.
So, one of the reasons why we're having this conversation now too is in twenty twenty-three, they're gonna redo the bridge. Uh, or the Cheyenne River there on Seventeen.
And the roundabout sixty-fourth.
Yep, so there's gonna have to be another exit point for people to get to the school.
And the roundabout and the bridge up here at Fifty-second. So you're gonna see three major road projects happening all at the same time, three. So having that connectivity of Ninth is very important to the city of West Fargo.
Yep.
Yep.
So we're trying to get ahead of this and get these agreements in place, so when we need to get moving with some of this stuff, we're able to work with West Fargo.
So what I would do, I would be asking for council, can we move forward drafting that agreement? And then I'd come back, after we have an agreement drafted up, I'd come back to the city council. Uh, West Fargo, they asked me to propose some other items and they indicate to them, you know, their staff. Not ready for that yet, because we need to be addressing the agreement, so.
So you guys feel good about that?
I, I think it's probably our best scenario we could have in regards to this, because you're keeping costs in mind for the residents. And you get some of the different concerns addressed um from state staff, from council over the years. And it doesn't put any pressure on having improvements happen like the sewer side. On existing residents, too hard. I don't know if you have any thoughts or what this is.
Economical.
Yep, Lucas, you got any comments on that? No, I think this is a good idea.
Timing wise for West Fargo, we would have to work through getting this agreement placed fairly soon. Because they do have obviously more development being installed. They're gonna have to account for some of that infrastructure early on, early in near future, here change order. That way, they could account for this within their system.
So because that being that to sixty-fourth is driven by the wild. Is that the joint powers, I mean, is that gonna be then shared cost or, I mean, is that?
I, I can't guarantee the outcome of that agreement until after we sat down and had more deeper discussions.
Okay, so that's part of the agreement that's all gonna be listed out.
If council wanted to have a council member involved, I'd likely ask uh Jeff here if he's available. Sorry, Jeff drew up into that, but being it's infrastructure, I'd be asking for his employee, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna look for a motion to uh go ahead with the uh joint powers agreement with West Fargo.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Jeff makes the motion. What was that, Sarah?
I said darn it, he beat me, I'm not passing them on a button.
Well, I'll give you a second chance if you wanna do a second on it.
I'll make a second.
There you go.
Don't Jeff, he's, we're still friends.
There, you heard it, all right, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion carries. Jim, what do you got?
All right, I will lead you through some of the current construction projects. And then Zach will take over and then get through some of the last year ones that are starting to finish up and move along at a slower pace. So the first project we have tonight is the connection to Casper Water Improvement District number twenty twenty-seven, just to give you an update. Um, we did get a time extension request from the contractor, I believe we got it uh yesterday. Uh, we got it yesterday and what they are citing is the long lead time for the meter vault. So the meter vault is a, is a manufactured item that is built. One hundred percent delivered to site, lifted on a crane and set out. So at the pre-construction conference last Wednesday, um they indicated that they're gonna start next week with the piping around the tower. They're gonna work their way to the east and did put, get everything in place. This meter vault is set on a concrete pad, they would get that in place and they would even bring uh electric, electricity down to that point. And so when it's done, it can just be delivered, set up, and then there's two fittings, one on each side of that, of that station, so. Um, they sent us a listing or a timeline from when they, when they uh started this project. So the bid date was on uh the fifth of August. On the sixth, they reached out to Great Plains, which is the manufacturer of the valve vault, to order and request shop drawings. On the eleventh, they signed their proposal, the purchase agreement with Great Plains. On the nineteenth, they contacted the uh supplier about shop drawings. There's twenty week lead time after the approved shop drawing, so right now, they are. The valve vault, provided there's no setbacks, would be delivered March seventh twenty-two. March seventh twenty-twenty-two. So they're asking, we're not gonna act on it tonight, this is just something that came up before, before we could uh get it on the agenda. Was they're asking for eight weeks from delivery date to install the vault, backfill, the structure and perform startup and finish the punch list. We will finish the project earlier if we're permitted and the schedule holds. So um quite honestly, they've done their due diligence, they signed the purchase order before they had a notice to proceed. They've done, there's not much that we can do about a twenty week lead time, it's, it's just a long, long lead time, lead time.
So basically then, so if I have this right, then they'll have almost all the mechanisms, everything else is gonna be in place by the end of the year?
Yes, that's, that's their plan. Have everything ready and as soon as they can put the vault in.
All right.
I was actually kinda surprised to hear them say that their plan was to get the floor poured, so that it could just be set on it. I kind of assumed that they leave that until the end, but um that was what they had indicated last Wednesday. But they do have, they have moved equipment in, they took loads of pipe today and the plan is to start next Monday at the tower. And work their way east and then north up to, up to our connection point at sixty-third and eighty-second.
It is what it is, I know we talked about this, we're gonna have some product delays and.
Yep, and when we, when they were, this came up with the pre-con, actually we've known about it for a while, that this is gonna have a little bit of lead, longer lead time. And they said they'd give us a update of how they've been going along and how they've been.
You can tell them I appreciate that, cause that's a good timeline.
So do I, yeah.
Well, that's good.
And they were very receptive, receptive to that. So you've probably seen the equipment around town, but the water re- water replacement project is ongoing. They're working in the areas that are going to be lined right now, so Willow Court, Cheyenne, around the trailer court here, but water main is gonna get lined. And in order to do that, they have to dig up pits where they run the liner through and then they have to fi- find and establish the services. So right now, the concentration is on Willow Court and they're gonna move over to Cheyenne Street, north of Southwood. There's a stretch in there and then they're gonna do some work over here in Nelson, so. It sounds like about two and a half weeks from the time they start to when they're done and done and out of there with the, with the lining portion of the project. So you've probably seen some little piping laying around on the ground and that's a temporary water, all the yellow mine pipe. And that provides the water to these houses while the main is being worked on.
Right.
So while, Furpal is the company, the subcontractor is doing the lining, so while they're doing their work. KPH is also replacing the curb stops and identifying, locating where those curb stops are, so that's working in Willow Court right now. And then, like I said, we'll follow Cheyenne and go that way. Once the lining gets going and all that starts, starts happening, they're gonna start the replacement. The replacement will start at Thue Court and Center, just to the north of Thue and Center by the senior center. And they're gonna work their way north to Wall, e- west down Mickey and then Cheyenne. Work their way kinda methodical through that. We have been getting updates from the contractors, weekly meetings and whatnot, getting those to Sally for posting on the website. But there will still be some intermittent uh shut offs, we're still trying to determine where some of the water mains are. It's getting to be, it's what we figured and then probably a little worse, to be honest.
I would've been surprised if you said it was better, cause I know we've been down this road before.
Definitely not better, um we are solving a lot of the mysteries, or some of the mysteries.
Yeah.
And creating more.
I figured that's gonna be the outcome of this, we're gonna find the things that we couldn't find before, we have to now.
Yes, so we are definitely, it's a good, you know, when we did the water meter replacements, it was a way of finding where the mod- where, what wasn't being metered. And, and that, this is a way of finding where the mains and, and the services are, so.
How far off from the map are they?
Well.
That, we know that.
Some of the map looks like that.
Yeah, I know, I know.
White sheet of paper.
I know, but.
Which you could scribble on, so. Um, three weeks ago, when we met last, two weeks ago, we talked about the lift station for horseshoe bend. And we were wishing that one to get a bid, we noticed it wasn't on the agenda tonight, because we got some comments back from suppliers and contractors. That our bidding schedule was too tight and they would have trouble getting the, getting the paperwork together and it could potentially compromise the bids. So I called the Department of Environmental Quality and talked to those who are pushing for a horseshoe to get off their private lagoon. And they were, um, they understood it, they didn't wanna force a more expensive project or something that was uh rushed or anything like that. They said as long as we're making the progress going forward and to reach out to them in October, to the middle to end of October. And then work with the city on moving forward, they don't, they understood that in the bidding environment we are and the supply chain availability. They didn't wanna have a project that was more expensive than what we had anticipated, so.
So if this got pushed off to next year, they're not gonna lose.
So the way we, we put out an addendum to push back the completion date to, we wanted the lift station done this year and operational. But the seating, some of the driveway work and some of that incidental stuff can be done in the spring, spring of next year. So we'll see what we get for bids, the bids are open next, sent more me, are open next Thursday and then it's your next city council meeting, we'll, we'll present those.
Cool.
But we did reach out to the DEQ and they were pretty receptive of that, so.
Good.
Zach will run through the construction projects and uh if you have any questions on some of those, we can take both of them if we need to. There were in your packets or sent out on teams for the most current projects, we've got the uh summary sheets. Uh, I don't know if you had a chance to look at any of those or if you haven't, we'll take any questions on, comments on that, so. Fire away, sir.
Go ahead.
All right, good evening councilman, Mr. Mayor, I'm Zach Hadding, for those of you who I have not met yet with Interstate Engineering. Um, we'll start off with Maple Lake Estates, they are down to punch list items. Um, they do have the storm lift station startup to do yet, but with no stormwater in the pond, that's kind of difficult to do. So there will be a um, that will be part of their closeout documents, that they have to do that in the spring when there is enough water um to do so. Um, Hundredth Avenue Force Main Project, which leads from Maple Lake Estates to the connection in Vistos. That one is down to a few minor punch list items as well. Uh, Lost River Fifth Edition is complete and we're working on the closeout documents for that one. Uh, Southdale Farms First Edition, we're finalizing quantities with the contractor. Uh, Southdale Farms Third Edition um is part of your summary sheets, so if you wanna take a look at that. And if you have any questions, I can answer them. Um, and Eighty-second Avenue, which is just north of the Lakeview Edition Project. Um, there's nothing to report on that one this time.
The one that you're gonna notice that I missed was the Lakeview, Lakeview Edition. Um, this is south of the high school, they've really been cruising. Uh, right now, they're thirty-five percent complete of the project and they use eighteen percent of the time, so they're really moving along. The sewer is a hundred percent complete, water mains are ninety-five percent complete, the main line for storm sewer is ninety-five, laterals are a hundred. Uh, they really are, are pushing along with that one.
So on some of these other projects, have we had much of a delay of game with the amount of precip that we've had here over the last couple of weeks?
Yeah, yeah, that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, there was really no work Thursday, Friday, Saturday. The last frame, maybe a day or so, and then uh Terror Gardens Third Edition, they chose to work yesterday. So they, after losing Thursday, Friday, Saturday, they came back and started on Monday, so.
That's what I wondered if they were, if we were getting behind now just because of that, we don't have to worry about it almost all summer, so.
Right, and with that Terror Gardens Third is the last one that we've got here for an update was sewer is ninety-five percent complete, water main is five percent. They haven't started the storm sewer streets, but it's not a real big project. And at the staff meeting this morning, it water, figured the water would only take them a couple of days, so they'd be pushed on past that, so.
You said Lost River Fifth is.
It's pretty, pretty much done, yep, we're just working on the closeout documents for that one.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions on this?
I think so.
Anything else, Jim, or?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, to the last page, thank you. Brent, you got twenty-four.
Okay, reminder next week, North Dakota League of Cities Conference, sixteen through eighteen, so it's a Thursday through Saturday. Um, financial sector position, update on that is, we're working, did an interview here, trying to think, last week. Um, working toward, working with our recruiter from Baker Tilly in regards to an offer for that, should have that out within the next day or so. And hopefully would have an answer shortly thereafter from the candidate. Um, last item I had. Last item I had is land use ordinance update. I met with Giffords Webster last week to discuss timeline, go forward, uh, where the project is at. Uh, a couple of weeks beforehand, Lucas and I met with them to get an understanding of where the project's at too. Uh, we'll be getting a working group together here in, towards the end of the month. They will meet and then I've also requested that Giffords Webster, uh, give monthly updates to the planning commission. They could do that via, you know, Teams, we'll just log them in, they could do an update. And then during my update, I could give just a general update to the council of what they've discussed during that, if you'd like. We wanna make sure that both city council and the planning commission are aware of where we're at within that project, understand the communication on that one wasn't strongest, that the consultant also wasn't at a point of engaging, or see, getting feedback yet from the planning commission and council. They're gaining to the points on the project though and now they will be, um, scheduling a time to come back out here, meet with council members or meet with the city council, planning commission, different stakeholders. Uh, we're looking at late October, early November and that's a tentative timeline right now. You'll see probably a lot more activity here coming up over the next few months with that land use ordinance. Uh, but like I said, they do wanna be engaged with both council and the planning commission. If council does want to have the consultant, have them call in and say, hey, give a couple minute presentation or where you're at. I could do that too if you'd like. I would obviously schedule it towards the front of the meeting so we can get that update, so there's some predictability of what time we'd be talking with them. If you'd like me to just see how it was going with the planning commission first and then give you updates. If you want a more thorough update or if you have a bunch of questions and you're able to engage a consultant that way too, so. Uh, please think about that and just let me know if you would like to have them engage the council during a council meeting, we could do that. So they'd be more helpful. Like I said, we're looking at late October, early November is right now where they can come back into town and meet with stakeholders, council, planning commission, similar like we did last time. That's all I have.
I know, I know. All right, perfect. Uh, on the portfolio reports, I guess I've just got one, um, and this would've been, I think, right after our last meeting. The mayors of, uh, West Fargo, Fargo, uh, Dilworth, myself, uh, and Morehead met with a bunch of different stakeholders who are involved in the addiction counseling and addiction treatment in town here. Um, we're having an uptick in the metro on overdoses, um, right, they're, they're saying something like over fifty percent from last year that were increasing, so we've met with the different stakeholders that are involved in the helping this process. We're trying to see if there's some other, uh, resources that we can get from the state or other help. We're just kinda getting a planning thing going right now. But they're gonna come back, these, the, the different groups are gonna come back and see if there's something that we can do to streamline some of the stuff where we can get more help where it's needed. So that's the initial phases here, the mayors are kinda driving this thing and so we're gonna see what happens, but, I think we're planning to meet again here in October, I'm just, I don't think anybody's defined a date yet, cause we're kinda waiting to hear back from different groups that we're dealing with, uh, if they have some ideas and then we'll vet them from there. So anyway, that's ongoing, so just wanna let everybody know that. That's all I've got. Sarah, what do you got?
I don't have much for updates because I have been out of town, um, so I will say no updates at this time.
Fair enough, thank you much. Naomi?
Well, I thought, um, Bean Days was fun, even though we had some rain, so thanks to everybody that came out and enjoyed the weekend with us. And then I think we're planning on having like a recap meeting for anybody that was involved in volunteering and some of the planning aspects of that, um, for the fifteenth at seven PM. And I believe that Sally did send out an invitation for that, so look for that in your emails. We'd love to be able to make things better and, um, get some more input on that, so, um, looking forward to that. And then just, I'm, I had a resident that had asked about, um, possibly having a second, uh, water meter, um, for their exterior water usage. Um, and so, I did let him know that we could set up a, a meeting for that and I just wanna extend that out to any of the residents that are looking at, um, the benefit, um, you know, versus the cost of that. So, um, if they are, if you guys are interested in that, we're gonna meet Brenton Thursday, this Thursday, the ninth, at nine o'clock. Um, so if anybody is interested in just kinda looking at the cost of that and just kinda weighing your options, I'd be happy to have you come to that meeting and join us for that, so. I don't know, Brenton, do you have anything to add for that?
Nope.
That's all I have.
We'll meet here at city hall.
Yeah, it'll be here, city hall.
And then your, uh, recap meeting would also be here at city hall in this room.
Yes, yes, sorry about that, yes.
Okay, that's all I'm good. Chelsea?
Um, not much, we've been working on getting bids for the new, uh, remodel for the offices, so hopefully we'll have that next time. You guys can see that. Um, and then just, if, if there's anything I can do on the ordinances, I'd love to, um, help and have those discussions, so.
Okay, that's all good. Jeff?
Um, the last few weeks, we've, uh, should say a few weeks, couple of weeks, we've had some meetings for special assessments. Um, I've attended each of those, just to make sure I know, uh, everything that's been said. My question, Lucas, uh, are residents gonna be getting individual letters or do they have to look at the newspaper?
For the objection hearing for the special assessment commission?
Correct.
We're sending out letters.
Okay, so those letters will be coming from your law firm or from the city?
City.
Okay, so, I'll tell residents to be on the lookout for that from the city.
We'll have it on a board sample.
Yeah, quick question with that, does the council want the, uh, proposed assessment numbered in the letter? Do you make the decision or I make the decision?
I would like to see it in there, I don't know how much work, work it's gonna be to do a mail merge.
So we could, what we could do is we could try it with, you know, one or two assessment districts or we could do it with all of them.
I don't think you can do it for one or two, I think you're gonna, you gotta do it all.
I mean, it's easiest to do, yeah.
And it.
If you would like it in there.
So right now, the draft that I have for the letter has it in there.
Yeah.
Okay. Which I think people would appreciate if you just leave it open ended, that you could be assessed, well, what am I gonna be assessed again? Um, you, you might have more calls to Wendy, who's gonna be fielding a lot of calls at that point, so.
This is a complaint that we received last year, not having it in there.
So, other than that, I guess, uh, I'll be at Bismarck next week and we'll be, um, have a little session.
There you go. All right, and with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn. Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
Come on, Sarah.
I'm stepping in on a second.
There you go. All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're done. All right, thank you.
Bye-bye.
See you later, Sarah, thank you. Bye.